Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to John Glenn High School. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wayne Westland Community School District. It is Monday, December 18th at 7:00 PM. We are going to begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, Ms. Hines. Roll call, please.
Abney Mitchell?
Present.
Dr. Weaver?
Present.
Hines, present. May?
Present.
Neal?
Here.
President Cox?
Present.
Let the record show 7-0. We have a full call.
Thank you, Mel.
Mr. Cox, I would like to make a motion. I would like to move for Item C under Human Resource Items on the Consent Agenda be removed from the Consent Agenda for separate discussion.
You want it removed from the agenda altogether tonight?
No, I believe the superintendent has a presentation based on it today. I would like to move further to be no voting on it tonight, though.
Okay. Motion by Gray to remove Item C on layoffs from the Consent Agenda. Is there support?
Support.
Support.
Support by Ms. Hines. Is there discussion? Mr. Neal?
It is remaining on the agenda in a different position, correct?
Yes, we'll put it back in the agenda at 207.23, just before Board of Education Committee reports.
Okay, thank you.
Does the support?
Support.
Support? Further discussion? Roll call vote?
Ms. May?
Yeah.
Mr. Neal?
Yeah.
Ms. Hines, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show 7-0. Motion carries.
Also, an additional change on the agenda this evening. We will add 203.34, which is Staffing Presentation by the Administration. Come on. Dr. Dignan?
Thank you, President Cox.
Excuse me. I would like to make a motion before we begin.
What is the motion?
I would like to move President Cox from his seat as President of the Wayne Westland Community School.
Yes, we can. I would like to. I would like to make a motion to remove President David Cox of his position as Board President for this meeting, and would like for Vice President Dr. Weaver to take over the meeting tonight.
And I second her motion.
Point of order? Mr. Neal?
I would like the board member to present whatever documentation necessary that allows for this to happen. It's not been asked of before. Wait a minute.
Please, please. Let's have a discussion about this.
I'm sure she looked it up. I just want to see it because I'm not comfortable with this unless I see that it's appropriate.
And the Education by laws and policy, it says that you can move a board president from their position.
Go ahead and read it. Read it into the record.
Y'all have the same policies as I have.
Well, I don't have it in front of me. I didn't have this all planned out.
The board may remove a person from the elected board office by majority vote of the serving trustees.
Okay.
Removal from the office does not contend removal from the board.
Okay. So, there's been a motion, support. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Gray? Mr. Gray? Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Is your call?
Mr. Neal?
No.
President Cox?
No.
Motion carries. It's approved.
I would ask that comments be made into the record if they're happening up here, conversations.
Dr. Dignan, ready?
Yes.
Dr. Dignan is coming now with a presentation on staffing.
Good evening. Real quick, first off, I just want to say I know this has been hard and difficult on everyone.
Please, 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 let's allow Dr. Dignan to speak and try to refrain from calling out from your seats in the audience.
Before I get into the presentation, I'm going to start after Plan Moran's final audit. What that did was gave us our financial reality as a school district. We were a little above 6% fund equity. At that point in time, we did a deep dive and unpacked the budget. The number we got to was $15 million to keep us above 5%. Like any budget, budgets can change in two days, two weeks, two months. This number could be fluid. I want to get into a little bit of the plan here. Flicker doesn't see. Oh, there we go. First of all, I'm going to talk about Phase 1, and that's where we're in right now. So, any of the things that we do right now are going to impact this fiscal year 2024. We started shifting existing staff to fill vacancies. We looked in within our organization to see if people had the certifications rather than hire from outside. We also reclassified positions using some of our grant funding and restructuring some of the grants that we targeted over the last couple of years. It equated to $26.3 million that we've reclassified positions in. The other part of the phase is mid-year layoffs. Again, that's something that would help us at the end of this fiscal year. Phase 2 is going to be student enrollment, and contract language will drive staffing across the district. We will look at every department and also every position that we have in the district to try to protect the integrity of the classrooms. We plan to create community focus groups second semester, and then also to have board workshops and retreats. Some of the layoff selection process, before the mid-year layoffs, vacancies were filled by shifting existing staff, and this had to do with teachers, assistant principals, executive directors, and special projects. The following process was followed. Staffing was reviewed by various departments district-wide. Positions were based on grant criteria, were reallocated to alternative funding sources to reduce the impact on the general fund. Our general fund is about 90% staffing, and that's not counting categoricals. General-funded positions that did not impact instruction were reviewed first. We were trying to stay as far as we could away from the classroom. Overstaffed areas and special project positions were evaluated and reduced. Contract language dictated the layoff process with our timeline and personnel selected. Even though we are eliminating positions, for example, social workers, all students will still have access to social work services. Some of the administrative reductions. We eliminated Director of Secondary Student Services, Director of Preschool Special Education, two elementary assistant principal positions, Director of State and Federal Programs was consolidated with the high school curriculum instruction position, Director of Technology pending layoff, and then Supervisor of Communications pending layoff. Just some of the positions. 13 were out of special projects, and I'll give it people a chance to view these. There were seven administrative positions, and again, these are some of the positions that were evaluated. Impacted personnel. Some of the impacted employees accepted alternative vacancies outside of their previous classifications within Wayne Westland Community Schools. Some positions were rescinded from layoff lists due to further review, and we're working with the remaining impacted personnel to select from a list of open positions district-wide. At this time, there are 20 total layoff recommendations on the Board Consent Agenda for approval. The savings for second semester would be approximately 1.7 million. A million is in salaries, and then about $650,000 is in benefits, including retirement, FICA, and health and dental. Moving forward, and we will send surveys out to create a lot of community focus groups. Again, we will have a mid-year amendment budget that is going to take place in March, and that is also when we typically start to do our staffing. We will have more board workshops and retreats, and again, those will be open. Student enrollment will be the driver of our staffing. So, again, it will be based on student enrollment, and again, we're going to examine all district positions.
Thank you, Dr. Dignan. Calling now 205.24, the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion? I'm sorry. Forgive me. 204.24, citizens' comments on Agenda Items Only.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Do we have an opportunity to ask questions, have a discussion on the presentation? Are we moving that someplace else on the agenda? Will we have the opportunity to ask questions in regards to the presentation?
Yes.
The board?
Yes. If you'd like to take that now, we can do it.
We can do it now? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Very well. The questions to who?
To Dr. Dignan.
All right. Very well. Ms. May?
Thank you so much. So, one of the questions that I have is in regards to the layoffs and the reshifting. Where does that place us in terms of our fund balance? Like, do we know the exact amount? If it's going to put us at 6%, 7%?
We don't at this time, and I can get you more information on that. One of the things is anytime that we go to do amendment on our budget, it creates like our financial reality. So, if we're below that 5%, then it could mean state intervention. So, in March, we'll have the indication of where we're standing from.
Okay. And then just a follow-up question to that. Is it possible to have a consultant from MDE come in and speak to us about what it means to go below 5% so that we have an understanding of what that looks like and what happens?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
We can arrange that.
Thank you.
And I had a quick question. I am concerned about these layoffs, not knowing the exact amount, how we're going to be saving money, especially when it comes to technology and even in our buildings. It seems like we took a huge hit with our custodial staff, and you know, with the number amount of children that we have making the buildings, they look so clean and beautiful. When you walk in the buildings, the floors are shiny. I mean, the staff takes big pride in, you know, what they do with that. So, I'm just uncomfortable with some of these layoffs until we actually know like what the percentage is going to be and how much we're saving. I don't think we have enough information to really even do this to senators.
Thank you.
The savings was 1.7 million for this year, and then $3.4 million for next year.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Well, my question is because we have met one-on-one, then we had another meeting, and to me, maybe I'm missing something because we started off with layoffs with administration at 2:00, then it was 5:00, and now tonight is 7:00. So, where did the other two come? Because when you put it down on paper, you add more numbers, but in this based on the layoffs, there is not no five administrations, seven administrations that I see. Maybe I'm wrong.
The first one, Secondary Student Services, we've collapsed that position. The Director of Preschool Special Education, we have not filled in. We've had other people filling into that position. The two elementary assistant principals were displaced because we had movement in other administrative positions. They filled in into those positions. The Director of State and Federal Programs was consolidated with our Curriculum Instruction Person, 912, and then the two other ones are pending layoff. So, that's the Director of Technology and Supervisor of Communications.
So, what you're saying is that the administration staff that you got in positions that's laying off, they have not been laid off, they've just been moved around?
The other positions, correct.
Okay, but the other positions on here, special projects, the six custodians, the student monitors, those are up for layoffs, right?
Pending layoffs, correct.
Pending layoffs. So, why do you have the administration position on the page with pending layoffs?
We...
That look kind of factual to me.
Yeah, some of those positions were consolidated and collapsed beforehand, so...
But they wasn't laid off. They wasn't pending layoffs.
What's that?
They not pending layoffs.
Correct. Only two are pending layoffs at this time.
Okay, can we just have the number two on there then?
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions by the board?
I have one question. So, with these layoffs, how will they be able to be called back? Is there like a timeframe? Is there going to be some job training? Because I'm really big on the people aspect. Would it be in Christmas? I mean, people losing their jobs. Unemployment is only $365 a week for 20 weeks. So, we have to make sure the people that are laid off are protected and have some type of job trainer skills. So, I definitely want to make sure we put that into place, some type of help for the people, or maybe a job fair. Wayne County's hiring over 1,000 people, but I want to, the people that's laid off, I want to make sure we have something for them in this fast because that's not a lot of time to prepare, you know? So, we can do something to help the people that do get laid off, some type of job training, you know, resume writing, something with Michigan Works to kind of help transition because we are in a recession right now.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Weaver?
Any other questions from board members?
Yes. I'd like to know a little bit more about the timeline. When did you start including the affected groups in the decision-making process or informing them?
I'm going to have Dr. O'Feely talk about the timeline. If you want. Question is the timeline of considering...
We provided a timeline to our board members.
Yes.
This week. It spelled out the process. So, you're not willing to answer that question in an open setting for the room here?
No, absolutely. We had the timeline, and we went over the timeline one-on-one with the board. So, we started, as soon as we looked at every position across the district, we started including in November, different departments and personnel into the selections, and we also talked to the heads of departments to see and gather their thoughts.
Were the bargaining units ever to talk to before the layoffs were announced?
We talked to them to let them know like what positions we're going to be up in and kind of went through the same timeline that we went through with you.
And my question, though, is what is that timeline? When was that?
I don't have it in front of me. I can get it and read the dates and stuff like that. So, we have all the dates.
A question about those very same dates. Are these the dates that you gave us when we met with you the other day?
Yes.
So, Board Member Gray has already seen these dates. He's trying to reaffirm the dates publicly, I suppose.
Yes.
So, no. No, I don't see why you can't. I'm just saying that the question is being asked as if, I want you all to understand, as if we had no knowledge of the dates. We've seen the dates. So, what we did was we asked for this presentation to be a simple, not the long-drawn-out one that we all did in the back room, you know, the three of us with the, to understand what's going on. We wanted a simple presentation so that we could ask these questions. I just wanted to clarify, is the question being asked for the audience or for the board member? Because he's already seen the dates. And we have them. We have a copy of them if you kept them. It's not with me.
I don't have them with me.
So, Dr. Weaver, I do have a question. Dr. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Neal.
I have one last question.
We have one more question. Ms. May?
I would just like to ask, as we move forward through this process, and I don't know if you have done this or not, but look at and talk about some revenue-generating proposals so that we're not just looking at cutting, but what are some ways that we can generate
Any other board member wish to speak?
I have one more question. I've been asking several times. We have Marshall that we need to try to sell. There's a company called Colliers International. They specialize in commercial properties. So, I mean, they were able to sell Canterbury, Inxter for more than what it's worth, so I also want to put that on the table. Maybe like our planetarium, you know, ways to generate funds for the district because I definitely want to see us making some money because at the end of the day, it's only going to get worse year after year if we don't have additional ways to make revenue. And if we're cutting our department with our grants and state funding, that causes us to lose money as well. So, we just have to look at, you know, some other alternatives, like my other board members are saying, to generate funds.
Any other board members wish to be heard?
I just wanted to say that trustee Neal said that we have a copy of the timeline. Some of us did not get a copy of the timeline. We have not received it yet. We was told in our meeting that we had to wait until after the other meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Abney Mitchell. All right, we're going to continue on with our meeting. 204.24, citizens' comments. This is on Agenda Items Only. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to the agenda tonight?
I'll ask my staff to stand up. My name is Melanie Peck. I'm the art teacher at David Hicks Elementary. I've been working for you for 29 years. My staff would like to know the reasoning behind the removal of our Assistant Principal, Angela Waitley. We have a 10% student population of cognitively impaired and emotionally impaired students. We have both upper and lower CI as well as upper and lower EI. Our EI students have severe behavior stemming from trauma. We have CI students with unpredictable medical needs. Just this last week, we had one of our CI students go into a seizure, one of the worst we have seen with a slower-than-normal response time from EMS. Our principal Amy G. was needed in this child's classroom, just as we needed Angela Waitley, our AP, with other students at that time. But instead, she was unavailable as she was doing transition time at Franklin Middle School, where she has been assigned to begin on January 16th. This is just one example of the need for two administrators in our building. We believe that the decision to remove our AP from our building is a decision you should not get to make without our input, and certainly not a decision you should make until you have spent time, days, months, years, working in our building alongside us and with our To work in our classrooms, to work in our hallways, and in our common areas is to know the immediate needs of all our students, needs that will not be spelled out in an auditor's data report or identified by your hired bean counters. Moving our CI and EI classrooms to another building is not the solution. Breaking up our emotionally impaired classrooms and cognitively impaired classrooms is not the solution either. All of our children deserve to go to the same elementary school for multiple years and not have to jump around school to school. All of our students deserve the same elementary school opportunities as their neurotypical peers. The solution is reinstating Angela Waitley as our Assistant Principal. Our students come largely from the city of Inxter. The community struggles with violence and poverty, and many of our children come to school with incredibly traumatic backgrounds. They need more attention from teachers and more interventions to meet their needs. It's why our school has blessings in a backpack. It's why our school offers a food closet and what amounts to our own mini-family resource center. But we have to be reduced to one administrator? Angela Waitley is able to skillfully balance the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of students while also meeting the support needs of our staff. For the first time in many years, students could see an administrator who found time to visit their classrooms and greet them daily. Ms. Waitley was specifically selected for this necessarily role, just this summer, by members of our school staff and district administration. Taking Angela Waitley away means nearly all of our principal's time will be spent on kids in crisis, and this harms both her ability to help the rest of the students in the building and help staff who deserve to be supported as well. Please... Assistant Principal's position at David Hicks Elementary because that is what is best
Could we have your name, please?
My name's Tracy Blanca. I'm a life skills teacher at Hicks Elementary, and I'm going to finish Melanie Peck's letter. Please do consider the reinstatement of Angela Waitley back into the Assistant Principal's position at David Hicks Elementary because that's what's best for students. Your David Hicks Elementary School staff, Melanie Peck, Kristy Brewster, Taylor Butrick, Sarah Huey, Lindsay Dugan, Stacy Watanabe, Mallory Ludica, Danielle Winston, Jessica Garcia, Alexis Shox, Blake Newberry, Crystal Kennedy, Kate Hagan, Rebecca Hodges, Martha Bills, Anne DeCarlo, Kristen Duran, Heather Van Aken, Kevin Nay, Crystal Willerick, Emily Dieter, Kaitlin Van Proyon, Salaska Rice, Natasha Zahor, Tracy Blanca, Joe Carlson, Marty Castillon, Renee Simoneki. Thank you.
Could we have your name, please?
Hi, my name is Sarah Huey, and I am the second union rep at David Hicks Elementary School. So, I would also like to implore the board to please keep Angela Waitley at Hicks as our student desperately needs to keep their Assistant Principal. Our students face a large number of challenges in their young lives and need all of the support they could receive from our district, including the support of a second administrator at Hicks. at Hicks. Please allow me to describe a few student situations to everyone in order to illustrate why we absolutely need to reverse this decision to involuntarily transfer Mrs. Whately to a different building. These stories are edited to maintain student privacy, but keep in mind as you listen to them that every classroom has several students who share similar experiences. My first story involves a young boy who confided to us that his family could no longer use their kitchen and couldn't cook anything to eat. When asked why, he stated that his oven and stove were broken and that his family's landlord refused to fix anything in the house. He stated that he was going hungry at home and that he only really ate at school. After hearing this, we bought the family a tabletop griddle, and the child actually cried tears of happiness and repeatedly thanked us for it. Can you imagine being an elementary school child who lived such a difficult life that a tabletop griddle made you cry tears of joy? Now multiply this by the dozens upon dozens upon dozens of students at Hicks that are living in similar circumstances, and imagine the effects this has and how much support they need at school when it comes to academic and SEL supports. Every day, the staff is stretched trying to help students like this, and we could desperately use more resources and people on hand to help meet the needs of these children. Instead, we are having our assistant principal taken away. My second story is about a young girl who struggles with anger. She too lives an incredibly difficult life, and without going into details, her home life is causing her to feel unsafe and unloved. Schools are only a safe outlet in her life, but she does struggle in school because of the previously mentioned circumstances. Because of this, building relationship with this student is incredibly important for her overall quality of life and her chance of success in school, and one person that she has a strong relationship with is our assistant principal, Mrs. Whately. I can't even imagine how devastated this child will be once Mrs. Whately is gone. And this situation is symbolic of the plethora of children who have a relationship with Mrs. Whately, depend on her for their Tier Two behavior supports such as check-in and check-outs, and cannot handle losing a healthy relationship with a safe adult given everything else going on in their lives. This is not what is best for our children at Hicks. Please don't cause them yet another trauma in their short lives by taking Mrs. Whately away from them. I should also mention that the way Mrs. Whately supports staff as we support these students is absolutely critical as well. She has a great relationship with teachers, makes us feel heard, and offers us practical day-to-day help, which enables us to do the best that we can for students. We are better teachers for having the support of an assistant principal, which our students at Hicks need and deserve. My third story relates to the current holiday season and a few events we have had at Hicks to help our students.
My name is Armando Zuna. I'll finish the story. My third story relates to the current holiday season and a few events we have had at Hicks to help our students experience the holiday joy. Up until this point, many of our students have not had the ability to celebrate gift-giving events such as birthdays and Christmas. One student shared that he had never gotten a gift from his family during these events, even though they believed in these traditions and would like to celebrate them due to financial struggles. A group of girls overheard describing how no one at our school should believe in Santa Claus, because only rich parents could buy their kids Christmas presents, and because they were too poor for their families to play along with the story of Santa Claus. Can you imagine your children living such lives that this was their norm? Fortunately, our administrators were recently able to partner with communities such as Wald Lake Northern High School, and you may have heard of this gift-giving event in the news lately. The joy on our students' faces was incredible, and we were so thankful that these high school students would do this for our kids and that Mrs. G. and Mrs. Whately could connect us with them. In addition, would anyone have guessed that the number-one most popular and favorite gift was a pillow, with students being ecstatic that they had somewhere comfortable to rest their heads at night? Necessities such as these garnered far more excitement than even the toys did, and it shows how critical the need is at Hicks. With all of this being said, the logistics for organizing connection and resources like this is time-consuming, and we definitely need both administrators on hand in order to continue to meet the many needs of our student population. I would hate to see our students miss out on opportunities like this in the future because our assistant principal was taken away and led to our leadership team being stretched too thin to be able to organize as many resources and events as they can now. In conclusion, I know that the district's financial crisis means that many difficult decisions will have to be made, but I hope that these stories show you that our students already bear the burden of many difficult decisions from others in their lives, and that they do not deserve to bear the burden of this financial crisis as well. They do not deserve to bear the burden of this financial crisis as well. Please, please do not make our children at Hicks Elementary pay the cost of an accounting mistake. Please do not take Mrs. Whately away from them.
I am also an alumni of the Wayne Westland Public Schools from Elliot Marshall to John Glenn, and my son is a student at David Hicks, and as well as I am a building sub there as well. And due to Hicks being the lowest of Wayne Westland Public Schools, we are in dire need of our assistant principal. And being a parent and as well as someone that is on staff now, I don't think that is a correct or the right decision to do for David Hicks. We need her, and Ms. G. needs help. Coming from a parent's perspective and being eyes-on with those students, we need everything and everyone on board. She's been there less than a year, and that's not fair to us. I just want to let you know that. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have your name, please?
Nick Appleby.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Nick Appleby, and I'm the supervisor of communications. I'd like to discuss agenda item 205.24, Section 2, layoffs, administrative, non-instructional, non-affiliated personnel. Back in 2018, the board approved my proposal for an in-district print shop with the goal of saving the district $120,000 on printing every year. I'm proud to say that we've rewarded your decision. The past three fiscal years, we've saved an estimated $550,000 or $180,000 per fiscal year. In our five-year plan, we also made a point that when the time was right, we would turn a portion of our efforts into revenue generation. This would be done by offering our services to both local businesses and the community, who have expressed interest in having this resource. This would give them a good deal on quality products while also providing us revenue. I've spent the last three months reviewing data and putting together a proposal for revenue generation. Long story short, we can have this service ready to provide in March 2024 and bring in up to $400,000 per fiscal year. The money we'd have to invest upfront to make this transition, zero dollars. We already have all the software, hardware, and staff in place to do this. That was before I found out I was being laid off. And with all due respect to the presentation earlier, my direct supervisor was not notified until she was told she had to lay me off. I did get to present my proposal next week, which you all have a copy of in the folder over there, but was told a few days later that while administration liked the proposal, they didn't want to move forward with it at this time. With the layoff decision and decision not to move forward, the print shop doesn't have the staff necessary to generate revenue, and it puts the $180,000 we already save every year at risk. The print shop needs more than one person running it. I want to be of service to the district. I want to do my part to alleviate as much of the financial burden as I can, and after seeing that presentation, I don't see how this isn't at least a part of what the district needs right now. I hope that others speak tonight on what they can provide for the district and ask that the board question these layoff decisions. Thank you very much.
Could we have your name, please, sir?
Good evening. My name is Todd Pauling. I'm a retired custodian of 37 years, former president of Local Four Support Staff. I will try, I will try to be short and sweet with what I have to say. I'm very disappointed in hearing how the district wanted to privatize a piece of support staff for transportation, but due to public pressure and not, not with the board, not the board didn't know what was going on, the district backed off. Why is the district putting plans of action in place with no board knowledge, meaning not just the president? The next option is to lay off another piece of support staff and non-instructional employees, custodians, student monitors, all because the general fund was mismanaged. I also don't like hearing the fact that you created a narrative that the union has not been collaborative with you, and that's simply not true. Local Four President Jeff Marty has stressed to me multiple times that the management does not want to problem-solve per our bi-weekly HR meetings we used to have. Instead, everything is going to arbitration, costing money and time. I have not once heard the administration, that the administration is looking to lay off anyone at the board office. You still haven't spoken, you still haven't spoken to the union at all on how much, when, and where you miscalculated funds. And you can't say it was raises that were, that were bargained and budgeted a year and a half ago, as was stated in the video to the staff. Where is the transparency? Where is the trust? How is it possible to dictate a narrative if no one in the district has any idea of what happened? Bottom line, I'm disgusted that employees who live, work, and collaborate or contribute to the well-being of our children are being held responsible for administration's mishandling of funds.
I'm Don Harris, the WWEA teacher. I feel I need to speak due to the district's mismanaged finances that have created involuntary transfers, resignations, layoffs, and has created an environment where people don't trust the district's decisions. On October 23rd, the WWCS four meeting revealed the district had spent tons, tens of millions of dollars, more than anyone ever expected. The board and central office responded that they were going to be transparent on this issue. The district sent out letters to the committee and a video, none of which provided answers, only more angst. Since the October board meeting, the district has yet to provide any insight into the budgetary shortfall besides layoffs to social workers. It's now been nine weeks, and there's still no decision on the number of millions spent or any collaboration plan on how to solve the problem. Oxford Dictionary states collaborative as produced and conducted by two or more parties. The teachers' union meets with the district every week. The teachers' union still knows nothing. This lack of information makes it impossible to know collective decisions are being made. The budgetary shortfall has had an impact on our, on our student services. Not only are classes being affected, so are our non-instructional personnel from pre-K on up. The district knows the important needs for SEL or social-emotional learning with our students. Well, Wayne Westland started school year with 30 social workers. They're now down to 24 with layoff of three social workers along with resignations. After the 20th, October 23rd school board meeting, Adams Middle School had a resignation which left the building with only one social worker. A special ed director instructed the sole special ed worker that she now would have to cover all the students' social work needs in a building of over 600 students. We're a district with social-emotional needs. The overworked, underappreciated social workers are also tasked with being on this crisis team, which covers general students as well. This is daily occurrence. Telling employees to just double their work doesn't solve the problem. Since the October 23rd Wayne Westland board meeting, we have had three, three counselors resign from the district, even us well short of covering all the students. The union has heard they are working on a plan. That include, that plan includes doubling the ratio, in two cases from a contractual ratio of 330 to one, to 617 students to one, in one building, and 629 students to another one. This is unsustainable. Counselors may have solutions, but the district has not asked them. It creates an atmosphere lacking confidence and leadership. This year, the district has consistently involuntarily transferred people. There is a person in central office that has a counselor, sir. Why not use him in counseling to help the district over the council? Again, some speech, some speech teachers are over caseloads defined by the State of Michigan guidelines. Wayne Westland has created a crisis for this mismanagement of the budget where students, staff, and community are eliminated, are creating a strained workforce. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neal.
Tanya Karpinski, Michigan Education Association. At the November 8th board meeting, President Cox started it with stating, "I want to give you some history on how we got here." I too would now like to give you some history on the union's timeline and the current financial situation that has us here tonight. May of the 21-22 school year, contracts were negotiated with the five MEA Wayne Westland unions. 2022, the district budgeted for $111 million in expenditure. The district actually spent $148 million, even though they had a revenue increase of 14%. June 19, 2023, the district budget was presented and approved at that board meeting, submitted by Assistant Superintendent of Finance Ms. Cleaves. President Cox and Superintendent Dignan were notably not present for this presentation. October 23rd, a school board meeting, the Plant Moran Audit was presented. The audit showed a fund balance of a 6.2%. October 28th, at a special board meeting that was held majority in closed session, back in open session, trustee Neal recommends seeking RFPs to privatize transportation. The motion fails for lack of board support. November 8th, special board meeting was held and ran by President Cox, where he stated that a professional person knows there's a job to be done but chose not to do it. November 21st, Dr. Dignan sent out a letter to the Wayne Westland community where he stated, "We believe that privatizing transportation services after the November 20th board meeting following President Cox's statement to outsource would save significant costs." November 28th, I submitted a para request for any data supporting the claims Dr. Dignan made in his November 21st letter and a demand to bargain. As of today, that para request still remains unanswered. November 30th, this date came up. All union presidents were called to a meeting with Dr. Ophelia and Dr. Dignan, where each union group was told, not collaborated with, the number of staff members that would be laid off from each union group. December 1st, employees received their notice. December 6th, the union's RFP and demand to bargain that we filed were denied, and subsequently, an unfair labor practice charge was filed against Wayne Westland Community Schools by the union. December 18th, we are here today to tell you the so-called collaboration and working with the MEA unions is not occurring. We are called to meetings and told of a desire to privatize staff layoffs, told of involuntary transferring of people, putting work on other employees, and we are told of eliminating positions. These are decisions that we are still questioning and will likely end up in additional grievances and unit clarification actions that will need to be executed due to the failure of collaboration. Unfortunately, due to mismanagement of personnel hiring decisions and financial spending practices, along with no known plan, no actual amended budget, and no current numbers providing the current fund balance, contracts that were bargained in good faith are now cause for concern. Therefore, we are calling on you as the board, hear us, and take action in support of your MEA employee membership. With more than 80% in less than two weeks turnaround time, voting no confidence in Board President David Cox, Superintendent John Dignan, and Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources Alex Ophelia.
Thank you, Ms. Karpinski, for your comments. Next, please.
I don't know how I follow that, but I'll try. My name's Jeff Marty. I've been with the school district for over 25 years. I have the fortunate opportunity to represent the members of MEA Local Four, which consists of the Transportation Department, Custodial Department, Food Service, and Student Monitor's, probably a total of 218 employees. Over the past year, it has been difficult to collaborate with this current administration due to continued contract violations. We have had to file more grievances and arbitration cases than we ever have done before. On October 24th, the district administration called upon us local leaders to attend a meeting informing us the district, of the district's budget shortfall. During this meeting, we were told we were going
During this meeting, we were told we are going going forward with the district would be completely transparent and keep us appraised with any new information. To this date, that's the only meeting I've had about a budget. The only other communication I received was a disc from the district was a phone call that informed me that they were going to accept bids to for outside contractors to privatize the district's transportation department. On November 30th, I was informed of a meeting to eliminate several positions in the custodial and student monitor groups. I'm here tonight to stress the significant impact these layoffs and job cuts will have in our custodial department and the ability to provide a clean and healthy environment for our students and staff. Please do not lay our people off. Please let us help you get this budget in order, but we cannot deal with this current administration.
May we have your name, please?
Yes, I'm Karen Truesdale. I am secretary to the principal at the William D. Ford Career Technical Center. I am here to ask for a reconsideration of the elimination of the CEDIS secretary. Ashley has only been with us for a year, and I was told that was considered a new position. However, the job was vacated due to a retirement in 2021. It took us a year to find Ashley to replace her, and the only thing that made it new was in order to find someone, we had to have the job upgraded from a grade four to a grade six. Once we did that, Ashley had applied for it. She has been wonderful. She came to us with several years of CTE experience from being in Taylor. She found from the year that we had no one and it was being CEDIS reports were being done with the state through an administrator. Ashley came in, reviewed the reports, found that we had over 100 students who had been not, I'm sorry, had not been reported to the state and found us $158,938 that came back to Career Tech and to the district. In 2021, the report that Ashley showed for me or printed for me showed that this was under administrative reporting. We brought in $689,372.37. With Ashley being here for a year, she has increased that for us to $848,310.78, which is an increase of $158,000, I'm sorry, $158,938.41. Ashley makes a difference for funding for Career Tech. We believe in skilled trades. We believe in vocational education, and that is what we do. We bring industry to the district to teach our children skilled trades. We need Ashley to continue this motion for us. Her job is unique, and she is the one who does it. I do ask with all respect that you please reconsider eliminating her position. She is an asset. Thank you.
Thank you.
It has been a few years that I have been up here to speak. Most of you know me, some of you don't, been around for a while. I will give history that this board has always had one board, one voice. Y'all need to come together. I have been disheartened since October, hearing when the teacher got displaced and moved from Wayne from Glen to Wayne for no apparent reason but budgetary. What I would like to know and what everyone behind me would like to know, when was the 17.5 missing? When did you know about it? And why weren't you as a board following after your one employee? You guys only have one employee. You have to hold that person accountable. Prior retiring transportation was looked at years ago, because I've been around here since '09. It was decided not to do it because it was not, I'm not saying fiduciary, but it was not safety issues. And why was there only two? Two, but what do you call them? Two companies come up and give out their suggestion. That's not enough. You have more people. This is safety of the kids. This is what was talked about years ago. Kids are the reason we are all here today. You're taking all these teachers and cutting them, staff, cutting them. They're the ones that are on the field every single day with the students, as Hicks was talking about. You guys are not doing what's best for the kids. That's why we're all here, and this is not helping them. Having 10% layoffs for staff in these units is not what is best for the students. Why, why are we not getting the information? Transparency is not being given. I've been looking for it because I do a little bit. I'm not good on technology, but I can't find a lot of this information. To me, it looks hush-hush. Where is this complete presentation for stage one and stage two? That should be given out. I like paperwork, so I want that in hand. Why doesn't the board take care of this one employee? I hear his and central administration not being chastised. Everyone else here is in here. That's not acceptable. The students are the reason we're here. The students who are the reason why we are all fighting and nobody's taking, nobody up here is really taking that into consideration. Think of the students first. They're the ones that are being hurt, harmed emotionally because they're losing their favorite teachers. They're losing their classroom, their education. Where is the excellence? Excellence in education, I've not seen that here in months. I go away and this happens, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. S.
Good evening. Kevin Markey, John Glenn High School Spanish teacher. The recent general fund balance should have been available to carry us through the next couple of decades. Wayne Westland Community Schools were in the best financial position they had been in over the last 30 years of my career. It was all spent by this current administration. Contracts, the administration continues to blame the contracts of our local union groups. Our locals have never asked for anything beyond reason or anything beyond the district's ability to financially sustain. Why would we want to ruin this financial stability? After all, we built this stability with all the cuts and freezes that all the bargaining units suffered. They suffered through these for 10 years. In the teacher's contract, we went so far as to put conditions on an additional 1% increase for this year. That is the only way the district would feel comfortable to add the percent. It was done as an opportunity to allow the district to show their integrity and trustworthiness, which we had seen growing previously under interim superintendent Jill Simmons. What a difference an administration makes. This, this administration administration spent more than $18 million from the general fund. They ignored the school boards directed to have a 15% fund equity in the general fund. It's now over three weeks after the promised time period for the district to provide us transparent and detailed plan to repair this. As of the moment, they have not, nor have they accepted the outreach hand of the union to help them fix the situation. How lucky we are that the solution is right in front of us. It's the easiest thing to do, and it's the right thing to do. It's easy and honorable. The district needs to cease all expenditures of Essar COVID funds that according to the superintendent's recent letter amount to 26.3 million. All of these funds need to be changed over to cover expenses paid from the general fund. We have no real choice. When you cause a deficit situation like the one we are in now, regrettably, you don't get to continue with all your new special projects. You can't add even more projects when you overspent to afford the ones you already have. If these funds are directed to the general fund, we could have $32 million in the fund or maybe more. That's enough to for the district administration to even follow through with the negotiated 1% increase and still have over 31 million left. The MEA contracts are not the cause of this problem. They never have and they never will be. School board members, you have the right to stop this immediately and institute changes that can protect the community and the school district that you love. If you act quickly, we can prevent this from getting even worse. I again will offer you my assistance and the assistance of our local unions and union leadership who have all dedicated their lives to the Wayne Westland Community Schools. I believe that together we can reorganize and reclaim our district. Thank you.
Good evening, governing board members and administrative team. My name is Dylan Wigella. I am state representative for District 26. I serve on the Education Committee in Lansing, the Labor Committee, and several others. I represent part of Westland, Inkster, Romulus, Garden City. And I was a teacher for seven and a half years. I was also a local union president and charged my negotiations for the district. And, you know, listen, I've been in districts where there has been an influx of state money for the positive side and where the districts where the money's tight. And one thing is consistent, and I want to stress this, that it is key in those situations, both good and bad, to open things up for collectively bargaining with the union to make decisions. Some things are complex, but many are not. One, rank and file educators cannot be ignored. Two, privatization of staff does not save money in the long run, and in fact, it threatens the safety of students. Three, cuts to school staff only hurt kids. Educator, working conditions, or student learning conditions. I stand here truly disappointed because in Lansing this year, we've been intentional with record pure pupil funding, increased money for mental health services, free breakfast and lunch for all students. We have expanded and restored teacher collective bargaining rights, and we have expanded union rights across the board. Lansing has set a clear directive here. Administration should be working with unions, not behind their backs. I feel for the staff in this room who stands united, I might add, because this year, we should be talking about raises, not pay freezes. Smaller class sizes, not larger. More support staff, not less. And I urge the administration and the board to do what's right and work together with our staff and our unions to solve these problems. Thank you.
Hello. My name, Bri Fan. I am a senior at John Glenn High School. What is this, my like fifth or sixth time coming up here speaking to you all? Come on now. First off, I just want to say I am so sorry. Like, my heart is with you guys truly. After hearing all of you and hearing people speak, this is heartbreaking to stand up here and speak. An 18-year-old, a senior in high school fearing their education, having to beg and reason with you, trying to reason with you to got for you guys to like, help our education, to help our staff, to help everyone in this district? I feel like at this point, it's just going in one ear and coming out the other. Like, this is not, I have been begging for a change and it's not happening. What like, what is going on? Why are teachers like, why are we losing more teachers? Why are they being moved? Was like, was Mr. Daley not enough? Like, why are we moving all these teachers? Why was Ms. Blay moved a week before school started? Not even. She was packing her class the day before school started. Like, really? Like, that's so irritating. This, nobody should be having to come up here and speak, begging with you all for a change. We need a change, not for this year, not for the next year to come, but for all these kids growing up in Wayne Westland schools. We need it for them because they are shaping the future as well. I shouldn't be having to see my kindergarten teacher come here and speak. That is not right. That is not right. I shouldn't be having to see her at a function like this. This is seriously sad. This is very sad. And not only is it upsetting to me, it's upsetting to the staff, it's upsetting to the teachers, it's upsetting to the other students. You guys need to come to us, and you need to come to the other kids, you need to come to the staff, everybody, before you involuntarily move a teacher because you don't know the impact they make on us. You don't know the impact they make on each other. That's not fair to move one of our special teachers. That's not fair to move one of our teachers that we look up to every single day. I have to walk past Mr. Daley's class and see his lights off every day. You know how irritating that is? You know how sad? You know how frustrating that is? Why does it keep happening to more teachers? Kids in elementary school, upper elementary, high school, having to come together to speak, begging you for a change, and you're not giving it to us. What else is it going to take? What more is it going to take for something to change for our education, for our teachers' lives, for our district's lives?
Your time has expired.
My name is Jessica West. According to a video from Dr. Dignan and Ms. Campbell, there are many false statements on social media and mainstream media that just aren't true. I believe that that statement is true, in my opinion. However, the false statements, misleading information, and lack of communication and transparency starts with you. Many of the statements that you made during that video are in fact false and misleading. You state that there's no evidence of missing money, and this was merely just a surprise. That can only be true if someone is guilty of mismanagement or negligence of duties, if not worse. You also state that it's a result of flow-through transaction accounting, as if something just happens from time to time. Even still, that's only 8.4 million dollars, according to you, and that secondary problem is a result of staff seniority steps, salary increases, and new bonuses. Was it the teachers and staff, or was it administration who got those steps, increases, and bonuses? Are you admitting that you didn't do your due diligence in budgeting properly after contract negotiations were finalized, or are you referring to salary increases and bonuses given to non-union employees and members of the central office administration team that have been done under the mismanagement of your administrative team? On your website, under the Budget and Salary Compensation and Transparency Report, you've posted incomplete documentation for both budgets and audits that with numbers that don't align between the two. You continue to move money around, zeroing out budget balances for secondary schools as one example, leaving the students and teachers with no recourse. I'm not really a numbers person, but here's what I do know. Numbers don't lie, but people do. Budgeted revenue was increased by $10.7 million due to a large increase in state revenue sources, with per pupil revenue growing by $458 per pupil per the 2023 annual report. Local revenue increased from property tax revenue. You increased expenditures by $20.1 million, according to the 2023 annual report, and $5.8 million in the 2022 annual report. You are overspending. The school district's net position is a deficit, President Cox, of $137.4 million. Hard to tell if that includes $121.7 million in bonds outstanding. The responsibility of management is to maintain internal controls to present financial statements free from material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error. I'd like to point out that if you read that audit report fully, as we've asked you all to do, the audit explicitly states that the risk of not detecting material misstatement resulting from fraud is higher than one from resulting from error, as fraud may involve collusion, forgery, intentional omissions, misrepresentations, or the override of internal controls. Therefore, Plant Moran being a professional organization and all that you trust would have caught an error, but not necessarily caught fraud. To add insult to injury.
Thank you, Mrs. West. Your time has expired.
My name is Angela Lentz, and I am the entire counseling department at Adams Middle School for 620 students. I have been the only counselor since November 16th, although administration knew well before that that the counselor that I worked with was resigning. I'd like to take the opportunity tonight first by mentioning that the administrator that left my building when this financial crisis came to light specifically advised us not to speak at school board meetings because we would be retaliated and targeted. I'd like to also mention that my evaluation has been highly effective since 2013, including last year at Adams Middle School, so I suppose time will tell if I will be targeted or retaliated against for speaking tonight. It was interesting to me to see the staffing presentation, but I have to say I was shocked and disappointed because there was no mention of the impact that this had on our students when we when we quote-unquote "shift staff." So I'm here tonight to advocate for the six hundred and twenty students at Adams Middle School. They also, that presentation also mentioned social work and that our students were still receiving social work services. One of our social workers specifically left when this financial crisis came to light and the social worker in my building, her caseload went from approximately forty-five students to over ninety. Just for some very clear data, approximately one hundred and sixty-five students at Adams have lost supports because we've had to move our co-teachers. That includes both general ed and special education students. We have four staff members that have left because of the financial crisis: a social worker, a sixth-grade teacher, a counselor and our teacher that provides MLL support, so that used to be known as ESL. We've had three people be laid off, two in the Family Resource Center and one of our hall monitors. All of our MLL students have lost their push-in support from teachers. We've lost our MLL Science Eight class. I found out on Friday after school that all of our MLL English classes, those students are dissolved and we now have to push those classes into general ed classrooms. Those students, many of them are newcomers of the country, coming to us from the Middle East, Syria, Mexico. Many of them do not read, speak or write English, and our teachers have lost the support, as have our students. We have over three hundred and five students that have not had a counselor, and I've been doing the best that I can to provide any academic, social and emotional support to our students. We have five sections of co-taught classes that have been completely dissolved because we've had to shift staff to other buildings, and we have a sixth-grade resource room that we had to double in size. So approximately three hundred and eighty-seven students at Adams Middle School have been impacted, that's sixty-three percent, and that's six out of ten students. So I'd like to take this opportunity tonight to invite every single board member to contact me directly at your convenience, and I would be at my pleasure to explain in more detail the more direct impacts that this has had on our students. Again, my name is Angela Lentz. I am the only counselor at Adams Middle School, and I am here tonight to advocate for my students at Adams Middle School. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Shannon Pippa. I'm a social studies teacher at Wayne Memorial High School. My first year of teaching, my first week was the attack of nine eleven. Been in the district for twenty-three years. I've been rated highly effective for a number of them. I would like to speak to the impact of laying off print shop staff. I know this might seem small in the midst of this much larger budget crisis, but the resulting uncertainty of the print shop will have a direct impact on my students. The potential loss of our print shop or decline in the shop's ability to complete work in a timely manner due to reduced staffing means that students will lack the resources they need for learning. My department at Wayne High and other departments there rely on the print shop to produce course packs for our students. We made this shift to course packs and using the print shop several years ago at the direction and with support of our admin at the time in order to save money and preserve the copiers in our building. These copies were necessary. We, as educators, know from basic knowledge of instructional best practices that reading from a textbook and answering questions every day is simply not good educational practice. Our course packs include a variety of compelling learning activities and primary sources in addition to differentiated readings. Moreover, our department in particular has not been provided funds to purchase curriculum materials in at least a decade. Indeed, President Cox himself at the special board meeting at Stockmeyer Auditorium denigrated the practice of teachers going online to find materials. To be sure, there are plenty of excellent curricular resources available for free online, as those familiar with instructional best practices know. But when the district provides no funds for purchase of materials, teachers are left to build their own curriculum and rely on copies and course packs for instruction. Reading online simply does not provide the same level of engagement with text as paper copies. Additionally, last year, the Department of Curriculum Instruction staff directed high school departments, including my own, to investigate and pilot new curricula. In U.S. History Nine, we have done so, working many, many long hours to put these materials to the test. But after the financial crisis finally became public, because who knows when it was really found out about, we were directed to stop that pilot, which is fine. I am happy to return to the materials I have spent twenty-three years refining, but that depends upon access to printed materials from the print shop. These contradictory directions and statements are all indicative of the overall mismanagement this district has experienced. Before making cuts, perhaps you should speak with the teachers who have devoted their careers and their lives to the well-being of children in this district and who rely on the services you are cutting to meet student needs.
I'm a teacher at Schweitzer Elementary. We currently are, one of the buildings that's losing our halftime social worker. She has personally helped me significantly with behaviors in my room, building relationships, getting resources for families that have lost employment. She is not able to be here tonight, so she wanted me to read this to you. And her name is Melanie Harner. Hello, I am grateful that my coworker is able to read this letter on my behalf this evening. My name is Melanie Harner and I am one of the social workers that may lose my job depending on how the board votes tonight. I wish I could be here tonight to speak in person, but I have to be at a needed medical appointment that may not be possible to attend if I do not have insurance after January thirtieth. I have many questions and concerns about having to leave my position at Schweitzer Elementary and Franklin Middle School. I have formed many relationships with students who need social, emotional support on a daily basis. I thoroughly enjoy working with the students and staff here in Wayne Westland Schools. As a social worker that was hired under monies provided by a 31N grant, which was granted to Wayne Westland Schools to increase the provision of mental health and support services, I don't understand how this position is possibly being cut as it is funded by designated grant money. When I was hired this fall, I was told this position was not funded by general fund monies. I need to understand if my position is cut, how will this grant money be utilized as it is stipulated to be used to support students' mental health and wellness? If I am not able to serve in this capacity as another social worker, is another social worker going to be taken away from their current caseload and the students they provide special education services to in order to meet the needs of this previously stipulated position as it was written into the 31N grant? The other point I want to address is that we have all been told that the cuts being made are done in a way that will not affect our students in any impactful way. I take issue with that idea as I feel that myself and all the other social workers in this district are impactful in the daily lives of the students we work with. Each day, myself and other social workers support teachers and other staff by addressing the social and emotional needs of many students. This year, I have assisted many students in times of crisis, sometimes to the point of needing to do an assessment to determine if they are an imminent threat to themselves or the students around them. Who will do these assessments when you have less social workers with the same amount of student needs? In addition to helping students who will help the families locate the local supports they need for basics such as food and clothing support? Who will help make the much-needed referrals to local mental health services that many families are desperately seeking? These are just a few of the many impactful needs that will be affected on a daily basis if you decide to cut my position or the other social workers slated to be cut.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Please make a decision tonight that truly supports the needs of the students. Thank you.
Could we have your name, please?
Hi, I'm Haley Martinez. I'm a sophomore at Wayne Memorial High School, and I would like to bring up the fact that there was a teacher at Wayne Memorial that was fired but got reinstated. But if he would have gotten, if he wouldn't have, if he would have not gotten reinstated, the seniors would have been at a great risk of not graduating. Mr. Green teaches a class called Credit Recovery, and he is the only teacher that teaches it. Without that opportunity, some seniors will not graduate. This needs to stop. These teachers were hired for a reason and need to stay because there are teachers that are being fired that are necessary for these seniors to graduate, and they're being put, they're at risk of being fired, and it needs to stop. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Kirsten West. I'm here to finish my mom's speech. Your budget resolution states the superintendent is charged with supervision of the execution of the budgets adopted by the board and shall hold the assistant superintendents, principals and administrators responsible for the performance of the responsibilities within the amounts appropriated by the Board of Education and in keeping the budgetary policy statement adopted by the board. To add insult to injury, when you tried to find solutions to these problems, the budget problems, you looked in all of the wrong areas, starting with employees that likely receive some of the lowest wages while maintaining somewhere around seventy to seventy-five members in the administrative office that based on your last salary transparency report are estimated to cost at least eight million dollars a year. You eliminate operating budgets across departments, you make a laughable attempt to privatize transportation, which you are under contract for, you eliminate necessary positions like paraprofessionals and social workers that our students desperately need, you insult our tenured professionals, offering them lower positions while below their qualifications and education levels. You have teachers and staff leaving due to uncertainty and surrounding districts waiting in the lurch with open arms to welcome them. Like an infection, you have seeped in to destroy this community and the school district, and we are collectively standing before you to tell you that the infection stops here. Bottom line, the school district has more debt than they do money and assets. Errors and surprises to this extent are unacceptable. A criminal investigation and forensic audit must be completed to ensure that no member of this board, this administration, or former members of this administration are guilty of fraud. An internal investigation is not sufficient, especially when people's careers, livelihoods and livelihoods are on the line and education is being compromised. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura DiMarco. I'm a paraprofessional at Schweitzer. Also, really quick to throw on the back of what Ms. Largent said, Ms. Harner is absolutely instrumental in our school, and I very much hope that she doesn't have to leave because the last three years I have been in classes with students who have threatened to hurt themselves and/or others loudly in front of the class, and two of those three years, there has been very little time and availability for them to get social work support. This year, there has been, and that has been astronomical difference. As far as the main part of what I wanted to say, the future steps presented in tonight's presentation were incredibly vague. The information being given out about the state of the finances is nebulous. You say you are interested in transparency, yet the information that we get is misleading, obfuscating, and often contradictory. If you truly value transparency, you need to start providing real, concrete and clear information. This includes details like numbers, dates and funding sources related to this sudden decrease in our fund balance. This includes what the ESSR funds are being used for, since they're apparently earmarked for other projects that you won't disclose. This includes job descriptions of board office positions and a response to the allegations of nepotism. This includes explanations of why revenue generating proposals are being rejected, and what future steps like "board retreats" refers to, because frankly, that sounds like you guys want to take the board on a vacation with money that we don't have right now? And I really hope that's not what's being proposed. And if you aren't interested in transparency, then please just stop lying to our faces and just tell us that you don't care about your students, staff and community. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Owens. I am an alumni at Wayne Memorial High School, and I have one son that is alumni and two daughters that attend Wayne Memorial currently. I'm going to try to do this as quickly as I can and as calmly as I can. At the last board meeting, President Cox, you were asked, I believe by the Spanish teacher of John Glenn High School, whether or not the financial team at the district double-checks each other's work before submitting a budget for approval from Mr. Dignan. I'm sorry, Dr. Dignan. You could not answer and did not answer that question. I found that very interesting. How is it that a president of a school board, that you do not have a clear understanding of how your financial department processes district funds and prepares budgets for approval? You went on to defend Dr. Dignan when he didn't do his job to review the budgets before signing off on approval on them by stating, quote, "He is not an accountant." I am also not an accountant, President Cox, but with my job, I sign off quarterly on budgets as well as expenditures, and I do not do anything with signing my name on any of it unless I consult my financial team first to review those documents so that I have a full understanding of what I'm signing my name to. Especially when I'm dealing with multimillions of dollars such as this school district does. If I approve a budget or expenditures to the tune of multimillion dollars, my corporate office saw that I approved those finances that resulted in a misrepresentation of those funds, I would be terminated immediately. Yet, Dr. Dignan still stands here gainfully employed, while other people in our district are innocently losing their jobs. Plant Moran also did not catch this mistake. When should we be expecting to see the perspectives of the other accounting firms that we are looking to have us represent us moving forward? Because surely, you would not keep the same accounting firm who made that grave mistake. Those responsible for this need to be held accountable. You saw no issue with terminating and even demoting employees as a quick fix to the start of the road of the mess that you created, yet you still seem, say no accountability for those that played a part in this issue. We have jobs created by Dr. Dignan that have never been in this district before, with overflated salaries along with the overinflated salaries of board members, and Dignan even awarded himself a fifty thousand dollar bonus this year on top of his already, on top of his already three hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year salary. Why not get rid of, excuse me, why not get rid of some of the useless positions that Dr. Dignan created, costing the district two hundred thousand dollars plus per employee per year instead of firing employees that made less than his bonus?
Your time has expired.
I'm gonna say one more thing because I know others who went over their time. You say changes need to become as a resolution to this issue. I believe everyone in this room can agree to that, and that's the only thing we can all agree on. Changes do need to come, and the changes are, Dr. Dignan, President Cox, we're coming for your jobs.
Before, before the next speaker speaks, I've been as lenient as I can be. I know that this is an emotionally charged meeting, but if you could refer to position and not name, that would, that would help us in this situation. Thank you.
Hello, I would like for you to look at me as I say this to you. I'm Taj Brown Bay. I'm here today on behalf of my teachers and staff and the unfortunate decisions being made on their lives and jobs without their knowledge and choice. I would personally would like to be at home eating or something like that, but I can't fathom the fact that some of the teachers I grew up with are getting laid off without any knowledge of it. Because of your financial hands, you didn't do nothing. You made budget cuts to multiple teachers and staff members over the last couple of weeks without their proper knowledge. My teacher, Mr. Green, was one of the people who were cut. Mr. Tim was cut and a whole bunch of others. I have witnessed, as I saw all these people in the crowd right now, how many are you here, how many are you guys here to save your jobs? Can I see more hands? Can I see more hands? How many of all of you? Okay. You see these... You see these people right here, they are losing their jobs because you're unresponsible what you do. That's not their problem, that's your problem. These teachers and bus drivers, they, most of these teachers right here got me through a lot. This is my sophomore year, these teachers got me through a lot and I cannot stand to see them lose their job because of your unresponsibility. That's your problem. Well, give me one second. Ms. Pippa, I know you're in the crowd watching this and I'm sad to see you here today because of these unresponsible people right here, that's none of your business, that's not your fault. Ms. Denise, I see you in the crowd too. I really hope everything works out because this is a mess. Mr. Sax, I know you're in the audience too. You guys need to do better, that's your problem, not ours.
Hi, my name is Armando Zuna and I'm a school social worker at Hicks Elementary School. I'd like to speak on behalf of our remaining school social work team and more importantly, our colleagues who were laid off as a result of this financial crisis. To be specific, those same colleagues who were used as an example at the bottom of the presentation earlier. I'd like to make certain everyone here is aware that in addition to the social workers laid off, we are also missing the three positions that remain unfilled and to our understanding will remain unfilled. This is around twenty percent of the total school social work department. The solutions we've been given is that those whom remain will be reallocated and moved throughout the district to fill holes and support. To avoid confusion, these changes will absolutely have a negative impact on the levels of care our students receive. My colleagues whose positions have been eliminated have almost certainly informed those children with whom they work that they will no longer be in their lives if these layoffs take effect. Myself and our remaining school social workers are left to wonder exactly where we may work or whom we will be working with or whom our students will be working with if we two are deemed to be expendable. These changes will have a detrimental impact on the social and emotional health of our most high-need students. Our general education students will lose access to absolute critical supports that they lean on as well. I request that the board take into consideration the impacts that these layoffs and unfilled school social work positions will have on our Wayne Westland Community School District students and families. Most importantly, I would like to personally invite all of you board members into our schools to see firsthand why we need every single school social worker in this district, including the ones we've lost.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I guess you heard my name. My name is Dean Zolko and I am, I am your mailman, actually, and I run the warehouse. And, you know, and I hired in here almost thirty years ago, there was five of us, maybe six. There's only me. And I moved the district pretty much single-handedly by myself and I'm not complaining, I love my job. And everybody in here I think knows I love my job. And I prove it. And, um, Nick Appleby approached you guys about a thing that, you know, I deliver the print material also, that's been added to my job also. So every mail day I go and get the print and I deliver it and I love my job, believe me when I tell you. I'm not complaining, I'm not up here to complain. But I do that and I look forward to it. Nick is approached, he said something to me about this, I said, "Nick, what are you doing? It's going to be more crap for me to deliver." But when he come to me, it made sense. He can print stuff, I can deliver it, and I'm willing to do it. And I will step up on top of what I already do and I will deliver the stuff, let's make some money. He's got a program and somebody's denying it and I don't know who it is and I don't even care and I'm not, I'm not, I'm going to get loud, that's just me. Everybody knows me, so it doesn't matter. But really reconsider Nick Appleby is all I'm begging you guys. He's the one that made this print shop happen, he made it work, he's the one that does it all. I don't know who the bosses above him are and all, it don't matter to me. But I know he is so good for this and we can make some money. I'm begging you guys. And I'm begging you for these guys, I got thirty-one and a half years and it don't matter to me. But you know what, these guys matter. These are real people and they're going to be losing their jobs. And you know, it just, it saddens me so bad to feel this, I'm willing to do whatever I gotta do and I was told to keep my mouth shut because I talk a lot, all right? But, so I'm not going to tell you what I'll do extra, but I'm willing to do whatever to make this happen. If it's giving up my own time and that's what I'm not supposed to tell you. So I'm sorry. I mean, I love you all and I love you all and everybody, but let's just get through this together. I'm just begging you to think about Nick Appleby.
Hello, my name is London Humphrey and I am a freshman who goes to Wayne Memorial High School. I want to speak behalf of all of the students that go here and all of our programs that we are being already, since last month, we are already being affected by your guys' mistakes, in quotations, your guys' mistakes that affected our whole community. We should not have, we should not be laying off almost forty staff in our whole community because of your guys' over-budgeting. And we should not have one Miss Lentz as a social worker in Adams Middle, we should not have that. It's, it's just, it's not, it's not moral. It's, you guys, you guys make all these decisions, these huge decisions by yourselves, don't take it, don't take into thinking that what do the citizens of Wayne, Wayne, um, W C S D have to say about this? You guys don't have any transparency with us, you guys don't, you sneak in, oh, like, I think it was like, I don't know, two board meetings ago, you guys sneak in, oh, we want private transportation and that was it, you guys ended the board meeting, which was not cool. Because what, it's the students who are being affected, staffs is being affected, and parents, especially, everybody's being affected because of your guys' mistakes and now seniors this year cannot graduate because of your guys' layoffs. Like, we cannot have one English teacher going back and forth from a high school teaching multiple classes and then you guys are laying, then you guys are laying off even more people that we don't know about. Is it really just thirty-nine people you guys are laying off or is it going to be more? Because you guys are never, you guys have not communicated with us and you guys have never been truthful with us? These past, this past, the past, when you guys have been, all of, several months, even nine months, it's years, years of you guys being, avoiding our questions, avoiding, avoiding our, not answering our questions, not giving the people what we need. Even years ago when I attended Elliott Elementary, we could not afford supplies to give to our students because we had no money. And even middle, when I was in middle school, we had no money to even purchase markers and whiteboards. How is that even possible if we, if now we have all this money, we have this chance to provide for the community, but now we wasted it because you guys over-budgeted? It's absolutely madness.
Thank you, your time has expired. At this time, we're going to take the next two speakers and then we're going to move forward with our agenda and then at the end of the meeting, we will open it up again. Thank you.
So I'm going to say two things first, and you said not to address anybody particularly, but Mr. Cox and Dr. Dignan have not been super respectful of these speakers, I've watched them not even look up at some of them, particularly students. And that is very upsetting to me. You and I, Dr. Dignan, have had one-on-one conversations in regards to this district and what's best for these students and I told you in August that it didn't just affect my three, now two, because I have an alumni, but all of them. They are all my kids, I've been part of this district since 2009. It's not acceptable, I have lost every ounce of confidence in you. And that hurts my soul because we have all been disappointed over the last fifteen years over and over and over again and we thought it was going to be better. And now it's not, it's just not. So now I have to worry for my younger children's education, I have one at Adams who has one counselor who I have to say to her, "Make sure you get next semester figured out," but you can't go to Ms. Stacy Brooks because she left, because you guys messed up. You don't need to be an accountant to know when your budget doesn't work. Everybody should be able to read the bottom line and see if it matches. It's not that hard, it's really not. I'm not an accountant, I work for one, I know how to read a budget, you know how to balance your checkbook, Mr. Cox, so you can read a budget. And just so you know, every single board member minus you, Mr. Gray, at this moment, was elected by us. You didn't elect us, we elected you. We are your bosses, we put you in those positions to represent our children and if you can't do that, you don't need to be up there.
Good evening, my name is Tanya Humphrey. Excuse me, and I have an eighth grade student at Franklin Middle School and I want to first shout out to Ms. Pringle and her team at Franklin Middle School. It is a huge issue with behavioral health, mental health, or however you want to address it. I did meet and I heard them speaking about the new assistant principal at Franklin and I did meet her today when my granddaughter was in the office. She had an altercation with another student, which is constantly going on. It is over six hundred and something students at Franklin. They're understaffed, it is not enough people to address these behaviors, so please don't take, and I don't want anyone to lose their jobs, but the social workers, the behavioral health, we need these people, we need hall monitors. So I was thinking, you know, I'm coming here with an issue and I thought because the school is already having money issues, how about inviting the Wayne Westland Police Department that, that officers that retired to come in and assist as hall monitors or whatever else that they can offer without having to add them to the budget? Because mental health is real. The children, I just feel like, the kids between elementary and high school, it's something different. You know, I don't know if they're trying to be, still be dependent or independent, but I know my granddaughter come home all the time talking about, you know, some of her friends are cutters or want to commit suicide, you know, or, you know, have a gun or vaping in the bathroom or smoking in the bathroom. The behavior specials and the counselors, the few that they do have at Franklin Middle School, it is not enough. We need some help, not just at Franklin, but, you know, I'm going to constantly try to come up with some solutions that won't call add anymore to the budget and if anybody have anything else, of course, this is what we all here for tonight is about the children. Thank you.
Thank you. To the rest of the speakers, we promise we will get to you at the end of our meeting. Now we're continuing on with the consent agenda. Item 205.24, do I have a motion? Move approval by Mr. Cox, do we have a second? Very well, the consent agenda then cannot be moved forward. We move on to the next. 206.24, curriculum instruction and assessment. I'm sorry, yes, thank you, I'm sorry. All right, item 207.23, the item that was removed from the consent agenda. We're going to open that up for discussion from the board. Do we have a motion to accept? This is item, this is item C.
Mr. Weaver.
Right.
I would like to move to table that item for a future meeting.
Does it have a second?
Support.
All those in favor, Melody, please call the roll.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes?
Excuse me, point of order, we have a motion and a second. We've not been asked for discussion.
Thank you, would you like to discuss it, Mr. Gray? Thank you.
The item that's being asked to be tabled has to do with layoffs and I don't know if the rest of my board members feel that we're not that united today apparently, so I'm going to tell you how I feel. This item being tabled is unnecessary. The reason it's unnecessary is by your presence and by the strength of your voice, you obviously created the environment you were looking for and that is, it would be impossible for this board to vote for any layoffs. Now, it doesn't mean I advocate for that because I'll talk at the end, it's my turn to talk about what a final solution is. Whether we care or not about what happens, it has to be understood, I hear a lot of people thinking that we don't care, we care just as much as you. Listen, please give me a minute, the difference is, we're also trying to search for solutions. I mean, there's a large group here today and if you all carefully listen, you all have, some of you have a little different focus now, but generally speaking, you don't want anything to change. Well, neither do we, but we are faced with an unusual situation and there has to be some kind of solution, but there is no strength on this board to override what you're talking about. And I know I'm speaking for them and they might jump up here and say, "Oh, no, I'm for layoffs," but I bet you they're not at this point, you might guess. So by tabling this, all we're doing is putting it down to the next meeting where you all will show up again and when it comes right down to it, they're going to say, "No, no, no, we're not going to do this, we're not going to solve this problem with layoffs." I'm okay with that, I'm okay with the discussion about how we do solve the problem, but just tabling it by itself doesn't get it. I prefer not to table it, I prefer to vote on it today because at this point, we don't have, I, earlier, before this board meeting, there was a small discussion between a couple board members about doing this in a second read because that way we can talk about it today and then throw it back on the agenda for a future meeting and talk about it again and then vote. But that's not going to take us anywhere on any new ground other than where we stand right this minute. And are we going to vote for layoffs? I doubt it, even though there's a lot more people than exist in this room that voted for us, the ones that did get voted in. You have shown your strength, you have said what you want, you're not going to be happy and we're not going to be happy because if we voted to do layoffs, you can imagine the ripple effect. To me personally, I'll be voting no on tabling because I want to keep it in this meeting vote today.
Thank you. Do we have any other discussion?
Ms. Hines, to say something as well.
Ms. Hines.
Yes, so we are all here today because...
Yes. So we are all here today because, you know, we believe in the Wayne Westland community. Looking at this, we still don't have the answers. We do not know how much we're going to be saving. We don't know the fund balance. There's a lot of not information we don't have. Looking at this layoff list, I am concerned about losing some of these staff. We already had two people come up saying how much revenue they can generate to the district. I think we need to take the time to look at the budget. We need to look at the positions, and look at how much things are being paid, and find another alternative. We still have time. There's no rush right now because we're still losing people. We're losing students. What I'm concerned about is losing communications. We need to do marketing to bring people back to the district, to bring the kids, to get more people funding. So we are losing a lot of money, a lot of staff, and we need to really make sure that we are in the correct positions. Because a lot of these positions, we should really overlook. I am concerned about social, emotional learning. We just had all these different growth works, solace care for our students, with having issues with suicide. They just talked about the high rate of suicide of high school students. So why would we take away those protections that we need for our students, even with the teachers? A lot of these people need our teachers. So we need to take the time. And I am concerned about losing credit recovery. Come on now, people. We are about the students. We need to have them graduated. I am so disheartened to see what's going on in this district. I've been here nine years. It makes my soul cry. The other day, I was with my bus drivers, and I cried because it is hard for people to lose jobs with no money, no, what if somebody has cancer in their family, they need the insurance. So we need to take the time that we need to make sure that we are making the right decisions. Wayne Westland is our family. I graduated from Wayne Westland, my son, my family, and we are a family. Treat people like humans.
Thank you. Ms. Abney Mitchell, then Mr. Gray.
So the reason I joined the board is so that our Inster kids can be supported. I am for the teacher, the students, the teachers, and the community. And I am not able to vote on layoffs because I don't understand the process. And I know not voting today is kicking the can down the road. I know that these layoffs is going to have to happen. It's going to probably be some more layoffs, some more cuts. But the process has not been explained to the board. And we have asked for the process. I even suggested that administration takes a pay cut. And I was told that, wait a minute. But I was told that that would not help. The layoffs will help, but the pay cut wouldn't help. So the reason, the reason that I'm not prepared to make a decision about the layoffs today is because I don't understand the process. I don't understand how those people was chose, and other people was not chose. And until I get an understanding about it, I can't vote on it. We are already in that same situation. When we, when the budget was presented to us, and we seen the bottom line, and we said, we're not accountants, that's the bottom line, that's what it's saying. So why should we continue accepting that? Why not understand the process before we say I do?
Thank you, Ms. Abney Mitchell. Mr. Gray?
Yeah. And one of the main reasons I suggest tabling it is because it comes straight from our bylaws, that we are not supposed to, if at all possible, vote on an issue like this when it is introduced. And there's a few reasons for that, but one of which is, a lot of people have gone up here and spoken tonight, and a lot of them have provided us with information that we have not received previously. And how are we supposed to go and look into the comments that people made, find out the truth with them, and find out what can be done about those, if we vote five minutes after they make the comment? And that's why I think at the very least, we owe the people affected by this decision the time that we put into research, what was said here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Ms. May.
So in effing many of my colleagues, the same thing. There's not a comprehensive plan. I don't, I cannot vote for something in phase, so this will be phase one. Still not knowing exactly how much money we're looking at, where we sit with our fund balance. Then we move to phase two, so I don't know what phase two holds. I would like to see a comprehensive plan, which is what we have been asking for. So for me, that's why we ask for a first read and a present. Also, it is imperative that we give the community, you all, the opportunity to give a suggestion, to hear your feedback. That's a process. And so it is important to me, when you talk about transparency, that we follow an entire process from beginning to end, before any decision is made. We all understand, we are in a situation where we're falling short. But we're going to have to make some decisions. Decisions are going to be tough. But we have to make decisions collectively. Not one person in the room can make a decision. We have to do it together. We have to hear the ideas. I appreciate those that came this evening. I didn't turn my mic on. I apologize.
So basically, I won't repeat everything, but what I will say is that I would like a full plan from beginning to end. What is phase one? What is phase two? What is phase three? How much money are we saving, or not saving, or cutting between each piece? I want to see it laid out. What are we paying for out of grants? What are we paying for out of ESSER? What are we paying for out of the general fund? Have we looked at everything? When you come to the table, and you're talking about making cuts, you have to look at everything across the board. And I would like to see what that looks like. Also, in talking about a first read versus, and a second read, the first read allows for it to be on the agenda, and for our community to come to the table with ideas, comments, thoughts, suggestions, whatever it is that you want to say. We have to give you that opportunity to be heard. This is part of, this is just the process. So we do that, then we move to the second read. Hopefully, at the second read, we'll have some answers to many other questions that were brought forward tonight. If we don't have those answers, then I'm still not going to be able to vote yes or no, to be perfectly honest. I won't say that. My vote will still be no, if we don't have the answers. So that is why I am asking for a second read. It's not about kicking it down, kicking it down the road. It's not about being afraid to make a vote. It's about wanting to make an informed vote.
All right. It has been moved in favor to table item 207.23. Mrs. Hines, will you call the roll?
For those funds I need, if it's tabled, where's my report? The layoffs date is before your meeting. Do I have a job then? Or do I, I'm just curious.
We had asked for a special meeting.
If I, if I lay off, you would pass them too, or does it, you have the capacity that I lose my job?
Good point.
I'm just curious.
So.
And I have, and I have, but maybe cash should have been before. I got my letter.
We understand. Ms. May?
So when we initially spoke about this, we asked for the layoffs to be removed from the consent agenda, and to be placed on the agenda as a separate item for a first read, meaning that a second read would take place at a special board meeting, which we threw out of date for that to take place before, that would take place before the notice that's on your layoff. So now we're waiting to find out if that special meeting will be.
No, I don't know.
So you don't know. But that's what we asked for. So in full transparency, I want to tell you that there was a plan that was put out there.
Mr. Vice President.
I'm sorry.
All right. To answer your question, we are hereby, by voting on this issue, we are hereby rescinding the layoffs, if the vote goes that way, at this time.
Mr. Vice President.
Until there's future consideration.
If you will.
Yes.
That is exactly why I would like to take care of it today. I know a lot of work has gone into all this. But this group is not going to vote in favor of layoffs. And yet, people like that are going to have to sit and wonder, what are we going to do at the next meeting? Is it going to come back up again? I know it's going to play hell with everything that we've talked about. And the fact that we don't know anything isn't true. We've been told exactly what money is going to be generated, and what it's intended to do, and why a phase two is necessary, and why a phase two can't be developed at this very moment without seeing how finances go. All that has been explained to this entire board. To pretend that it hasn't is not fair to these people. But based on that, here they are. They're not going to go away. They're going to be at the very next meeting. And half of them are going to, not half of them, those people who are under fire, possibly going to be laid off, are going to be in mystery zone. There's no reason for them to wonder. We should vote on it today. If you're in favor of layoffs, fine. If you want, if you don't want to vote for layoffs, you should vote no. And then we can begin to work on some other comprehensive plan that involves something else besides layoffs.
Question to the president?
All right.
So we just had two, sorry. Question to the president?
Yes.
So we just had two staff members that are being laid off talking about the savings that we have had to the district. So I would like to look into that. If somebody said they could save us $400,000 and $800,000, I think we could take the time to research and make sure we're making the correct decisions.
Thank you. We are going to now go to vote on this matter. And what this means, that is my understanding at this point. If we vote to table this until such time as we can get with our community, and, and move forward on this issue, that there would be a reinstatement of all of those employees who have been pixelated.
If it's tabled, do we vote?
If we, if we table it tonight.
Or if they vote no.
Or if we vote no. All right.
So Mark, you made a motion, correct, for us to vote tonight?
No, I made no motion. I'm just speaking on the motion that was presented, which is a motion to table. And I'm not sure by itself, a motion to table gets it done. I don't remember all of Robert's rules, but we may have to talk about the fact that it's not just being tabled, but when it's going to come off the table. Nevertheless, I made no motion. I'm just speaking what I want to do, and why I'm going to vote no on the motion to table, because I want to give them an answer tonight. So that's what I.
Thank you. We have the motion, and it's been seconded. Ms. Hines, will you call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Neal.
I'm sorry, what?
Mr. Neal.
What? Oh, my vote, okay. Sorry. Somebody else will talk. I vote no.
Ms. Hines, yes? Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
This is a vote to table with?
Yes.
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item, item 207.24, we have a Board of Education Committee report, Finance Committee, Ms. May.
The Finance Committee of the Board of Trustees of Wayne Westland Community Schools met Thursday, December 7, 2023, beginning at 4:30 PM via Zoom platform. The meeting was called to order at 4:30 PM. Dr. Dignan presented information regarding staffing and transportation. Mrs. Campbell explained the selling of surplus property. Mrs. Campbell explained the investment report and check register. Dr. Dignan shared upcoming district events. Board members asked clarifying questions regarding staffing and the budget. It was suggested that this work should have been done in a board workshop, and that we should have board workshops moving forward, because this is very important work, and we need input from the community. The meeting was adjourned at 5:32 PM.
Thank you, Ms. May. Item 208.24, review and approval of Business Service and Finance, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you, Vice President Weaver. My recommendation for the board tonight is to sell one of the five new Ford Transit vans that were purchased from Goran O'Ford last year. These, two of these vans were fully funded from the CTE Equipment Grant. Those have been wrapped with the WW CSD logo and wording. An additional two of these vans were fully funded from the SEMCO grant, and have also been wrapped with WW CSD logo and wording. The fifth van has not been wrapped, and although last year it was stated that the general fund could sustain the purchase of that van, and that it would be budgeted for, it was not budgeted for. And I would like to recommend selling that van at this time, and returning that money to the general fund. We paid $51,885 for the van. And after a little bit of research, I have found that these vans are in very high demand, and have retained their resale value. And I anticipate that we can sell this van for no loss of money to the district.
Thank you. Ms. Campbell, do we have a motion?
So moved, support.
Moved by Hines, and seconded by Ms. May, or?
Abney Mitchell.
Abney Mitchell. Is there discussion?
Yeah, I just want to, to remind us all, though, that this is 2023. There's been the COVID pandemic, and then there's been the strikes with the auto workers. This is not a solution that we may have in the future, if issues like this happen. So while we can do this and recoup the cost this time, this is something in the future, we need to remember that this is not going to be a solution the next time.
Very well. Any others for discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Hines.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes? Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
President Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries, 7-0.
Thank you. Item 209.24, we're going to open back up to the, to the audience. And you can speak on any subject you wish to at this point. Non-agenda items.
Hello. My name's Jamie Perry. I have seven students in this district, six of which are my children, one niece. I have two in Taft Galloway, one at Franklin, and three at Wayne Memorial. So far, since these cuts have been made, and since these changes have been made, I've already seen an impact with social work. Three of my children see social work. Already very stressed with their schedules, and the amount of kids that they need to see. They already don't have the time they need to put into these kids. And now there's less of them. My, one of my high school students, his life was threatened this year by another student at Wayne Memorial. The school stepped up. They had the staff at that point in time to do so. They have these hall monitors that you've so graciously let go, keeping my kids safe, to make sure that this student doesn't come back in the school and hurt him. And there are less of them. My three Wayne Memorial students are afraid to use the restrooms during crossing, and are not allowed to do so during class, because of the activities that these hall monitors are doing their best to bring down and to stop. My kids, this is, this is a district that my husband grew up in, and was proud to bring our family back here, too. And I can't say that anymore. I'm saddened that my kids from elementary, from my third grader up, are feeling this, are seeing this, and are understanding this at 100% capacity that I didn't expect. You heard from my daughter, one of my Wayne Memorial students tonight, my lovely, blue-haired daughter. That's just one of my three high school students. My, my oldest, the one that was threatened, is autistic. He couldn't speak tonight, obviously. Social work is absolutely a necessity for not just our special needs students, but our students that are, are fighting mental health. Our, this isn't a world that they asked to be brought into, but they are fighting tooth and nail to be the best that they can be. And we're supposed to be supporting that. We're supposed to be behind them, helping them to be the best that they can be. And we're failing right now, because of mistakes that were made. However they were made, it doesn't matter. It needs to be fixed. And getting rid of these people, these necessities for our And getting rid of these people, these necessities for our students, is not the way that we're going to fix that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a 15-year-old girl from Wayne Memorial High School.
Could you give us your name, dear?
Alexis Taylor.
Thank you.
I have only been in the school district for the last four years of my life. And since I got to Wayne Memorial, there has been a significant amount of teachers that have helped me through some of the hardest times of my life. Some of these teachers are the ones that you so graciously decided to lay off because of the simple fact that there were so many mistakes made on your part within the school district. And I personally don't think it's fair for you people to be able to go home, wherever you live, however far it may be, however nice it may be. You get to go home every night and know you still have your job when so many of these teachers that already find it hard to maintain a lifestyle that is just somewhat normal. And they have to be the ones that are facing these pay cuts and these layoffs and getting fired when none of this is their fault. No one in this room is at fault for what happened, except for possibly you people. No one else has control over the budgets that you have control over. No one has control over the accounts that you have control over. And yet everyone else is the one facing all the backlash from everything that's happening. All of you still get to go home to your families and have a sound head knowing that you're going to come back to your job tomorrow. These teachers, these staff members, they don't. And that's disgusting to me. Personally, I have a relationship with Mr. Tim. He's a custodian, a hall monitor, that has been laid off at Wayne Memorial. And that was one of the most disheartening things of the whole situation. He, I've witnessed him single-handedly be one of the people that kids go to when they are having horrible days, when they feel like they can't trust anyone else. These teachers tell us, find a trusted adult. But you're just firing our trusted adults. You're getting rid of them and you're not giving us real answers as to what all is going on. Like, we're still in the dark for some things. And we come here and we say this stuff, but at the end of the day, it doesn't mean anything if you're not really listening. So I just hope that you take everything everyone has said here today and you keep it in your head and you actually do something with it and that our voices actually have a meaning.
Thank you. Next speaker, yes?
Chris Dibble? Chris Dibble?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. As a parent in the district, I am deeply concerned for the well-being of my four children and the staff of Wayne Westland that serves them. Tonight is a week before Christmas. There are so many here with uncertainty and undue stress brought by the mismanagement of this board. Shame on all of you. We, as the community, demand better. I am ashamed to say that I voted for many of you because you promised better for my family. How are these teachers, many of whom I've come to befriend and know, supposed to support and instruct my children with the uncertainty brought into their lives by this board? Show me why I should support you in the future. We want transparency. We want good faith negotiations. I demand better and believe me, I vote.
Thank you.
Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Heather Martinez. I am a retired special education administrator from Wayne Westland Community School District for almost five years. Retiring was a very difficult decision for me as my heart is still with and always will be with the children, community, and staff of Wayne Westland. While I was a part of the administration team, I was blessed to be able to work in 17 different buildings with a variety of admin, staff, and students. I worked under two superintendents and two interim superintendents. When Dr. Dignan came aboard, I had hoped that we would be able to reach our students and community in ways that we could only imagine previously. There have been a lot of emotions shared tonight. A lot of people are very angry. I am here to say that I am mostly disappointed in you, Dr. Dignan, and in all of you as our school board. You have let us down, but most of all, you've let the children down. I'm also here as a voice for the dozens of staff members who have shared information with me that do not feel comfortable speaking up tonight out of fear of retaliation. That includes previous employees still in the education field who feel you may try to blackball them as well. To be clear, the financial situation we are in is a direct result of settling labor contracts that you could not afford, hiring ridiculous number of additional admins at central office, the most expensive employees we have, and not ensuring that your finance department was able to calculate and project funding from year to year. This egregious mismanagement and lack of responsibility from all of you is beyond disheartening. For example, the November check registry alone shows three transit wagons at $51,885 totaling $155,655 that have not been used at all since they were purchased. Three buses totaling $410,094 supposedly budgeted for last year, but there are more buses on order now that are absolutely not needed at this time. Vehicle wraps totaling $14,400 not needed right now. You could have had Nick Appleby do something fancy to throw on them and make something to go on temporarily, but you're voting potentially to lay him off instead of getting rid of others who have been here with less time, make more money, and contribute less to this district. You also purchased six John Deere Gators at $41,037.61 totaling $246,225.66 and one Batco loader at $154,241. I thought it was really suspicious when I left May 1st and my position was not posted or filled until very recently. You left 10 buildings in this district without direct special education support for over six months. I know you're going to say they were covered, but I completely disagree. They have not gotten the support they need to this day. My phone is full of calls, texts, and emails from admin and staff at all levels seeking answers to questions or help with problem solving in terms of what to do for our kids. I always answer because, again, my heart is still with this community. Over the last several weeks, I have submitted FOIA's to gather more information and come to an understanding of just what went wrong and where we stand. As you all have recognized, there's a lot of false and misleading information out there. My goal was to be transparent and share information. I'm sorry, but my time might be up, but it's really yours that's up. And I have people here that will continue my speech or give me their time.
Thank you.
Hi, Bonnie Perendo, Tara at Stevenson. I'm giving her my time, please. Thank you.
My goal was to be transparent and share information to help everyone work together for our children. We should have been doing this all along. Instead, Dr. Dignan, you opted to delay my responses and my requests. When I emailed all of you on the board to help, you didn't even bother to reply back to me. Your lack of transparency leads us all to question your ability to lead moving forward. Speaking of our school board, for almost five years, I've attended a variety of meetings and observed how things work. There are no words to express how disappointing it is to watch a blatantly segregated school board try to support this community. We have three very strong women here who seem to have the right reasons on one side and then the good old boys of Wayne Westland on the other. Mr. Gray and Mr. Weaver, I thank you for your vote tonight. However, our community needs more moving forward. Dr. Dignan, that setup starts as an example at the top and is perpetuated in a variety of ways throughout our district. Your lack of support for diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts, as well as an unwillingness to attack disproportionality at its core, are, again, very disappointing. As a previous co-coordinator for PBIS in the district, it saddens me to know that the efforts we made are performative pieces of paper and formalities, not strong initiatives being put into place for our students, resulting in the bamboozling of the county and its stakeholders. The budget you have proposed, and another area in which I'm repulsed, is they directly impact our kids, cutting our Family Resource Center, our behavioral supports for students, paraprofessionals, and social workers. Social workers being down, it's six positions, just to clarify, not three. You say our kids are going to get social work, one social worker having 93 students? How is that possible? How is it possible? When our kids are in crisis, they can't see them and meet the needs of general education students. I worked very hard to advocate for our social work teams, as well as other departments, due to the needs of our students. And those needs have not changed, they've only intensified if anything else. Most of the people you cut are from the Wayne Westland community, the people that care the most about our students. None of those cuts put even a dent into the financial situation. Yet, here we are. You choose to put the basic needs of our students secondary to the people that you are giving payroll to. If you expect, how do you expect students to learn and meet without meeting their basic needs? I can tell you our students and community need support more now than ever. Out of all the top administrators in our district, I know of only one who I witnessed going into buildings and actually supporting students in need and crisis. Thank you to Jennifer Curry, who stood by our staff and worked with our most fragile students in their time of need. Most of your initiatives are centered around secondary students. What you don't realize is that it starts with our children, the babies, our preschool, our elementary students. Under your leadership, we lost our Head Start program, this which was a tremendous loss for our district, one that will take years to recover from. Our children are coming into school needing more support than you can ever imagine. The number of kids in crisis at a young age is beyond anything I've ever imagined. Yet initiative after initiative and dollar after dollar were thrown at sports and hiring your friends to bring ultimately what? What did you bring to this district? You said you wanted to bring School of Choice students in. That was your reasoning for inflating all the sports programs. But now you're just running our students out. The number of families who are going to pull their children out of this district after your poor leadership is going to impact this district for years and years to come, probably generations. The sad part is the students who don't have parents to drive them elsewhere and need the most support will be left. Left with what? What is it going to take for you to make changes from the top that do not have a huge impact on our students? That's where changes need to be made. I don't want any of my friends to take this personally because I love all of you. But there are multiple positions at central office that can be eliminated or changed to be reflective of where the district stands. At the end of the day, Dr. Dignan, the responsibility solely stands with you. You were once what I consider to be a great man who helped others, including myself, and brought hope to this community. Now you have failed us. As the CEO of my own organization, I oversee everything that happens. It is my job. I have the ultimate responsibility in the same way that you do. Your blatant disregard for being fiscally irresponsible and accountable for the state of the district is criminal. I work directly with my CFO, my COO, to monitor and make sure our financial position is good on a daily basis. Before I sign off on anything, I double-check, I triple-check as needed because at the end of the day, kids count on me. It is my responsibility as it should be yours. Instead of blaming a previous CFO and previous human resources director, it is on you. You signed off on the budgets, you saw the audits. It should not have taken you this long to catch on to any errors. Furthermore, I sat in on two separate negotiation teams. And what you're saying about unknown salary increases, bonuses, increases in insurance costs is completely false. We couldn't make a single step in negotiations until they were brought back to you and cleared by you, back and forth, back and forth, all the time. So to say you didn't know about this is a blatant lie. In the end, it is disheartening to witness the dire consequences that have resulted in direct reduction of employees that play an integral role in shaping the educational experience for all students in Wayne Westland. And their contributions should never be undervalued. I implore each of you sitting up here tonight to investigate and correct the circumstances surrounding this fiscal mismanagement. The well-being of the students you serve, staff, and the community should always be at the forefront of your priorities. The trust is now compromised. I end with asking you this question. If your child attended school in this district that acted this way, would you accept the answers that were being given tonight? I don't think so. Thank you.
Please step up.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Fawn. I am a senior at Wayne Memorial High School. As we know, we are currently stuck in a deficit while simultaneously being given little to no transparency. Most of us have heard of this deficit first in October. And now we hear there is still little information and feel that there is a possible refusal to offer information. Could it be complacency to lead our district to ruin? How could the board claim to care if they show little sign of acknowledging the problems within our schools if they make decisions causing those very problems? In the perspective of the students, the community, teachers, parents, staff members, and other members of the Wayne Westland Community School District, the attitude of the board gives us little ground to trust the board. With the laying off of important staff, the looming threat to privatize transportation, the belittling of mine and other students' education, taking away the support for the younger generations, how can we find this trust? Are these grievances simply write-offs to you? I have two younger siblings in this district, one currently enrolled in Adams Middle School who needs additional support. What will happen to my siblings when I graduate? How can we be sure they and all the people of this district will be given the education and support they deserve? I see my fellow peers, the teachers I've had throughout the years, the parents and families around me who are losing confidence in the integrity of the board. Rightfully so. Many of us are enraged by these arbitrary decisions. Many of us are begging for resolution, for transparency, and yet we are refused them. Even more alarming, some of the people up there are not given that transparency either. The speakers before me have offered their grievances, their solutions, their ideas. Will you hear them, will you hear all of us?
Hi, I'm Amy Connors. I'm a parent of a sixth grader at Stevenson Middle School. I want to start by saying that actions speak louder than words. And even though we've heard repeatedly that the students should come first and we don't want the burdens of the decisions and mistakes that have happened to fall on them, saying that you're going to lay off staff at the school level is the exact opposite of what you're trying to say. Because cuts at the top should have been the first choice. But your first choice was to cut the people that work day in and day out with these students. And so, like I said, actions speak louder than words. Your words mean nothing when what you're trying to put forward will directly hurt our students, period. And there is nothing you guys can say, no way you can sugarcoat it, that is going to convince anyone here with a logical mind that that makes sense, because it does not. And my son is an IEP student. He spent two years at Stottlemyre and one year in ECP pre-K at PD Graham before they said, you know what, with a one-on-one para, you can do Gen Ed. And he spent six years in Gen Ed with a one-on-one para. Great progress, every year. And then they said, you know what, middle school, and I knew this and I said it, even though the words weren't exactly, the district didn't want to pay for a one-on-one para for him anymore. So we're going to make him just independent enough so he doesn't get his one-on-one para anymore. And we're going to boot him from Gen Ed, which is all he's ever known, to a cross cat room. My son has had more issues in the first half of this school year than he has ever had in all the years he was with Gen Ed one-on-one para. He has epilepsy. He also has a medical need on top of his autism diagnosis, which would allot him a one-on-one para for the medical need. Middle school is one of the highest rates of instability for epilepsy because the child is going through so much physiological change that it is hard to manage their epilepsy. So as he is in danger, every day he goes to school of having a seizure without the proper support staff that he should have to immediately respond in the case of a medical emergency. When I requested at the beginning of the year to receive that, my social worker, my son's social worker, who is one of the ones listed, Ms. Tris Wyatt, as one of the potential layoffs, was the only one who was trying to help fight for him. When she tried to reach out, she got a, eh, well, you know, kind of, no real answer. Two weeks later is when it was announced that money is missing and we're freezing everything. When my son needs this, and anyone that knows me, I am not the mama bear to poke. So I tell you right now that since you guys are out of compliance with my son needing his one-on-one para, and if something happens to him because of that, no one at central office will be safe. I will come for everybody's job. And it's not just for my son because I know Ms. Wyatt supports many students and does more than just social work. And so many kids will severely be impacted by the loss of her and all other support staff. That, like again, I said, no one with a logical mind is going to believe your talking in circles rhetoric of how that's what's best for students by taking away the people that work in with them day in of how that's what's best for students by taking away the people that work in with them day in and day out when most of you has probably not even set a foot in a school or in a classroom. And if you have, it's few and far in between. Last meeting, I wasn't allowed to be, I wasn't able to be here, but I did listen to all almost four hours of audio. And repeatedly, I heard, "I don't know, I don't know, I don't know." If you don't know, then someone else needs to be making decisions that does know. It is not acceptable that any layoff should happen at the school level. I don't care how much money it will save. Because, mental health crisis, teenage suicide, adolescent suicide, adolescent substance abuse, school shooting, all of those things, Wayne Westland is not immune from those things. So to think that we can cut back an already lacking, you know, support staff is idiotic. And to, you know, see, I get worked up, sorry, excuse me. We need the support staff at these schools. And I know that you guys have heard repeatedly all of these things over and over again. I truly hope you take it to heart. I truly hope you decide to make the right choices. Because regardless of what happened in the past or why it happened, none of that matters at this point, but the decisions you make going forward does. So please reconsider stances that will harm our students and our families and make the right choice.
Thank you.
Good evening. Sorry, I'm short. So I want to give you, my name is Jennifer Crane. I am a teacher at Wayne Memorial High School. This is my seventh year in the district. From day one, I loved being a part of the Wayne Memorial staff. By the end of year one, I was like, I want to retire there. I love my students, I love our kids, I love the staff. So much so that when we were living in Livonia previously, I pulled all of my students out of Livonia Public Schools and brought them to Wayne Westland because that's how strongly I believe in our mission here. So I have one alumni, I have an 11th grader, and I have a 4th grader at Graham Elementary. I was very nervous about speaking, being an employee. However, anyone who knows me knows that when it comes to my children, the biological ones, not the 150 that I see every day, I get a little emotional. And so, on that end, I need to say that the social and emotional supports that are at our schools are critical for our students. And when I say that, I mean it because one of my biological children may not be here to this day had it not been for the people in that building that gave her the support that she needed so that she could push forward with her, with her issues. For her privacy, I'm not going to share them. But please know that because of them, she is still here today. Obviously, her father and I helped too, but she sees them every day, all the time. My son, who is a 4th grader, it hit home personally with Ms. DeCarlo. My son, she contacted my husband and I, she built a very great relationship with my son. And she said, "You know what? I'm seeing these things and I wanted to bring them to your attention because he's so bright, he's so intelligent. And I think these things would help." So, we have started to pursue that. She knew those things, and now she's gone. She, she would see these things, she helped to fix them while we were working on the problem to get him evaluated, to see if he does in fact have ADHD. And, and now, Ms. Markham is doing a beautiful job. I would never take anything away from her. She's done great. But, here's this teacher he built this relationship with, and in 4th grade, it's a big deal, right? And now, she's gone. And so he had to start over in mid-October where he just got comfortable with someone. And, and I don't, I don't think that it's fair. So I know that I'm running short on time. I don't know if there's anybody who would let me have time, I don't know. So, anyway. Okay, thank you, Jen. Nice name. Anyway, so, so the point is, is that my children have been deeply affected by the people who work at Wayne Memorial High School and Graham Elementary School. And I would like to mention that when the time came for us to buy our home, my husband was like, "It only makes sense for us to move to Westland or Wayne because that way you'll be in district and then you can vote on important things that come up because it's going to be more personal and it's going to mean more to you." So therefore, when we purchased our home, we purchased our home in Westland, knowing that that would keep our kids in district. And, because like I said, I wanted to retire from Wayne Memorial one day. So obviously, that has me a little nervous with things that are going on because I'm only seven years in the district. I'm not one of the long haulers yet. So let's hope. But I wanted to give you some solutions. So when you're considering fixing these problems, I beg you to talk to the people who are in the rooms every day. These people behind me are class acts. They love kids. They will do anything for our students. I've seen it, I feel it, the way that they take care of me, the thought of losing coworkers because they are the ones that keep me going. This has been the hardest of my 13 years of teaching. There have been days when I'm like, can I really do this anymore? And I know it's winter break and we're probably all like that, but it's, it hits different this year. My class sizes are crazy. And so, the sheer amount of IEPs that I have in my classes this year, along with the numbers of accommodations that these students need per their IEP in order for us to be in compliance, it is a lot. It is a lot for one person to do, to educate them to the level that I expect myself to educate them. And I, I can't do it as well as I used to. And that's what I go to sleep every night stressing over, that I'm not giving these kids my best because I can't, because I'm tired. I'm tired. I do it anyway. I do the best I can, right? I'm only human. But I know if I feel this way, other people feel this way too. We're tired. Being great for your kids is exhausting. And then I go home and I see those faces of my, my children and my husband, and I've got nothing left for them. I'm exhausted. And so, it's actually come to the point where I have to then decide, is, is this what I can do? Is this sustainable? And I love what I do. I don't want to do anything else, never have wanted to do anything else. So when you are deciding to make changes, don't start at the classroom. Don't start at the people in the hallways because those are the people that keep our buildings running. I would personally like to extend an invitation. Literally, any of you who want to come and sit in my classroom, you can come in anytime. It's a great vibe, it's very chill, the kids love it. We have tables, you can sit back, you don't have to even sit at a desk. Come and enjoy my room. Come and see the kind of work that we do. Then walk in the hallways and see what those hall monitors do and the way they keep order in our hallways and the way they take care of our kids. Not like, hey, take your hood off, but, hey, are you sad? What happened? Did you have a bad night? It's, you can't replace it.
I'm sorry, but your double time has expired.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
This will be very brief, since I did not get a chance to add this to my comment earlier. In case anyone on the board did not see this out in the hallway when you entered the building, this is a list of 20 current and four prior, or, I'm sorry, previous employees, but 20 current employees that have a direct connection to Dr. Dignan, and they were hired directly by him. Some of these were hired without the job even being posted. And some of these have an extremely inflated salary. But they are all directly related, one way or another, whether it be through previous employment or whether it be through alumni associations at Michigan State or what have you. But you're all welcome to see my copy. I'm sure that other people in here, in this room, have copies. That would be more than welcome to hand you their copies so everyone can have one. At this time, I'm letting the board know, and I think I can speak for everyone in this room and everyone that's already had to leave this evening, that the public is asking for a motion to terminate Dr. Dignan from his position as superintendent. Immediately.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Andrew Ambrose. I actually appeared before all of you a few weeks ago when you interviewed Mr. Bradley Gray. Mr. Gray, you were the most qualified applicant that night. And I congratulate you and I support you. A few weeks ago, about two weeks, this district froze the budgets, zeroed out the balances for a lot of programs within this district. One program that it affected, and it affected hard, was the music program. I don't know if you realize, but the music program needs things like cork grease, reeds for clarinets and saxophones. They need valve and slide oil for brass instruments. We need strings for, for cellos and violins and basses. Parents came up with $1,000 to supply the band with supplies that they desperately needed that was supposed to be provided by the district. That money that should have been used to help provide for their families were providing for their kids to be able to have a good musical education. I also want to talk to the students and the teachers. I'm sorry. We as voters have failed you. We elected the school board to be able to look over the fiscal needs. The Michigan Association of School Boards has that listed as one of the duties and responsibilities is to watch over the fiscal matters of the district. And unfortunately, this board has failed it. Yes, Dr. Dignan and his staff create the budget, but each one of you have to approve each expenditure. The night that the audit was presented in October, you also hired an executive director, and a director for special education. You already knew you were in a deficit and you still continued hiring a high-priced employee. That's just one example. We need the board to start taking their fiscal responsibilities more seriously. Start questioning what is happening when budgets and expenditures are being presented for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Board members and superintendent, my name is Brenda Ozog. I'm a graduate from Wayne Memorial High School. I'm also a second-generation Wayne Westland employee. I've been with the school district for close to 11 years. 10 and a half of those years were with Head Start where I was a family service worker. I worked with the families that were poverty level or below and really down and out. Once we lost that program, I went over to the Family Resource Center. I currently hold a caseload of approximately 80 homeless students in our school district. My coworker also has a caseload, so probably double that number. And we are the ones who take care of the homeless students in Wayne Westland School. We also help all the families across the district with needs that they have. Socks, underwear, school supplies, hygiene items, toiletries, laundry assistance. Who's going to do that now because both my coworker and I have been given the notice to lay off? I hold a master's degree in social work and I was offered a para-pro position. That was supposed to be the compatible position for me. Do you think that was compatible? I'm not hearing anything. I've been in social work for over 20 years, 23 years. I worked juvenile detention. I was a department manager of social work for the Health Department. I worked Child Protective Services, then I came to the school district. When I worked at Stottlemyre, the nickname I heard through the school district, the building was called "The Beast" because of the behaviors of three and four-year-olds. And you take away behavior specialists and social workers who are there to help these kids. We are the second biggest school district in Wayne County. We are not Cranbrook. We are going to have the down and out families. And most of us are here because we're here to help. Taking away two people from the Family Resource Center? That's going to create a lot of harm for our families. We send a report to the board every month of all the referrals we do, how many families we serve, how much money we spend, how much we do in donations. You guys don't even know. I go outside my job at work, my husband can tell you, and meet with families who are living in hotels to give them food cards because they don't know how to get any food at the time. These are our families and this is a job that I do. I go on my own time, meet the families, and try to help them get food, clothes, whatever they need. Most of our families are living in hotels. We had one family living in a tent behind a bar. We are here to work with these families. We only, we only know a certain amount of homeless families, but we probably have double or triple the amount because they're doubled up. Getting rid of the Family Resource Center is going to harm the families more than it's helping. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Jessica West, this time unscripted. I've listened to a lot of the comments tonight. And, as some of you probably know, I've also created a community group because I felt that there were, there was information not being provided by the district and there was communication that wasn't happening across the community. It was being buried across community groups. Let me tell you that when that happened, the floodgates opened. These teachers behind you and the community behind you have a lot of information and they have a lot of solutions to offer. You have to start listening to them. Creating actual partnerships and actually going to the departments and asking the department heads what solutions they have to offer is the first and foremost step. And, and that has not been done. It's not being done transparently. I get countless comments and feedback from teachers, many of which I, I hold confidentially because the teachers, many of them behind me and many that have left, do not feel comfortable standing up here and saying what they have to say. And I can't tell you how many times I've had a teacher send me a private message or tap me on the shoulder and say, "Thank you so much for speaking up for us." That is exactly what we want to say, but we don't feel comfortable saying it because we feel fear of retribution for that happening. I have teachers who are afraid for their job right this second, who are seeking employment in other districts. I have teachers who are, who've already submitted their resignation. I have teachers breaking down to me crying that they're afraid to even leave their position, much like Brenda was just saying, because what will happen to the students that are left behind? Some of us that are more fortunate than others can move to another district and figure out transportation options. It might not be easy, but we can make it happen. But many of our students aren't afforded that opportunity. They won't have anybody to take them where they need to go. They won't have a Family Resource Center. They won't have social workers to stand up for them. They won't have paraprofessionals sitting next to them. They'll have no one. They won't have a meal. I was told by a teacher that half of the students in her classroom, that is the only hug that they get during the day. It's the only time anybody ever tells them that they love them. And that teacher sends their students home with meals every single day because they don't have food at home. And that teacher helps them find ways to launder their clothes because they don't have access to laundry services. So when we're talking about whether or not we keep paraprofessionals, social workers that help find solutions for those problems, or whether we keep vehicles and land and school buildings that should be sold off, should have been sold off a long time ago, whether or not we keep new positions, high positions, high- whether or not we keep new positions, high positions, high-paid positions, doing something that somebody with a lesser title was doing before, we have to start making actual difficult decisions, putting our pride aside and recognizing that you're supposed to be for the students and not for the paychecks of friends. You're supposed to be for the students, not for the paychecks of friends. And so that's really all I have to say. You know, I feel it's really important that these teachers and these students have a voice. I'm so proud of the students and teachers that came up here and stood and talked. I appreciate the board members that have stood up in the right direction, who are taking accountability for their actions and who are righting the wrongs right this second. I truly appreciate that. And I'll tell you, we're watching. The community is watching. And we're not joking by the fact that we're saying, "We are holding you accountable. And if you don't start standing up, you will not be sitting in that position any longer." Thank you.
Hello, my name is Becky Hodges. I work at Hicks Elementary. I teach fourth grade. And I wasn't planning on coming up here tonight, but... And I don't have a lot to add on top of what everyone else has already said. But it's really wild to me that we're getting rid of a handful of custodians, considering in the last month, like, my room hasn't been mopped at all, not once. The one time that they finally called in an emergency custodian for my building is when the news crew was about to come in last week because of the presents that were being donated by Wild Lake Northern. That's the only time my room got mopped because they were worried about the news crew coming in, seeing my floors look like that. We have 25 to 30 classrooms in our building. We have a consistent daytime custodian who cannot mop all over the classroom floors during the day when he's there. And we have one consistent custodian for the evening, and she does a fantastic job in the rooms that she does. I see her wiping windows. I saw her wiping the drinking fountain today. She does everything she needs to do. But my classroom is not part of her job, and that's fine. I don't have an issue with that. But there's not a custodian for my room for the evening. And that doesn't make sense to me. So getting rid of custodians is such a small thing. It makes a huge difference in the classroom because those floors are disgusting. Anybody can attest, especially at Hicks, those floors are nasty. The tiles that were chosen in the new renovations are terrible and show every single smidge of dirt and are very difficult to clean. So unless you guys want to keep buying me Clorox wipes because my kids are cleaning the floor with Clorox wipes, we shouldn't be getting rid of custodians. Thank you.
Thank you. Continuing on. Item 210.24. Yes, please.
Hello, my name is Councilwoman Melissa Sampe. And I really, I was debating whether I was going to speak or not. But I really implore you guys to listen to these people that spoke tonight. I know it's hard. You know, I've been in your spot. But knocking on doors as a politician is what you guys should be doing, is knocking on doors of every single one of these teachers and saying, "How can we help you? What is going to make your job easier?" To lose the critical positions and what I'm looking at, that is putting the district at risk. It really is. So what I would say to you is that you guys really need to listen. I've seen a lot of people with tears in your eyes. I don't know if you're taking it in, if you're not. But I'm telling you right now, the district is falling apart. I mean, the calls that I'm getting from teachers, from students, the district is falling apart. I mean, I don't know how to be more clear. The district is falling apart. What are we doing? What are we doing here, transparency, communication? We have to come together and make sensible decisions to keep our teachers, to keep our students. The students don't feel safe. They really don't. The parents, I can't even go into the stories that I've heard. So what I ask all of you is knock on these doors. Talk to these teachers. Talk to these students. That is how you need to be making your decisions. Thank you.
Well, this isn't going to be easy because I have this little teeny-tiny piece of paper that was not planned out, but...
Could we have your name, please?
Oh, Melinda Harris.
Thank you.
I was here back when Ms. Swanson got transferred, and I wasn't happy about that. But I've listened to what everybody's said here tonight, and I feel really bad and really horrible about all these jobs. And I'm taking in what everybody's saying. And I believe, you know, teacher participation is important and parent participation with the district and listening to what they have to say matters. But I've also listened to a lot of things that were brought up, like somebody was saying that they're low on school supplies. Okay, well, I know specifically at Wildwood, the parents do donations. I don't mind doing that. We have tons and tons and tons of supplies, so we're not short on supplies. I came up with another way to save money, and that's get rid of all the pesticides in the districts because all it does is hurt our children anyways. And I was repeatedly emailing this Matt Connolly that never wants to listen. People are more important than pesticide. Get rid of all the pesticide companies. We have to cut the grass. Might be able to help people with jobs. As far as the RISA and Head Start thing goes, that wasn't the district's fault. I volunteer at one of the elementaries, and I heard that RISA came in and was saying this room was a Head Start room when it was really a GSRP room, and they were giving out violations. So that wasn't the district's fault. Okay, there were comments made about people, you know, working for the district that are bringing in their own people. Principals do that, too. They do it all the time. They bring in teachers and different employees and hire employees. So everybody does it, not just the people here. So, and as far as families being really poor and needing assistance, everybody knows we can go to the Department of Human Services. We can get cash assistance. We can get bridge cards. So, I mean, there are solutions to that. So I think what everybody says, we all need to come together. We all need to work together. Let's not attack. Let's not attack because we don't know what goes on behind there and you don't know what goes on behind here sometimes. And I do know there are people working back there that actually volunteer at the school. So let's not attack each other. Let's come together, okay? And I'm sorry for what everybody is going through with their jobs. I'm very sorry.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mayor Racine of the City of Wayne. I'm sad that I have to even come up here tonight and talk to you guys, but I felt it was necessary just to come up. I know most of you that are sitting up here. I know you care about these kids. And I know this is something that is hurting each and every one of you. This is not an easy position for any of you guys. But I know you guys are here listening, and I know that you are hearing what people need. I'd encourage you to go into every single school and have individual meetings like this in every one of your schools and talk to the families singly in those individual pods and try to figure out what each school, what you can do that way and just break it down as simple as possible. This isn't going to be easy. But you're in a situation that solutions are needed now. We can't wait for all this other stuff. I believe Dr. Dignan can get us through this. You hire people for the good times and the bad times. And I know that he did not want to see this happen. He wouldn't be sitting up here taking and listening to all this if he didn't care about this community. And we need to try to work with Dr. Dignan and the school board to try to come up with solutions and work with your unions. Bring everybody to the table. Talk to anybody and everybody. Get everybody in the same room that you can do with Open Meetings Act. But I'm supposed to be the peacemaker as a mayor in the city. We need to try to find peace and try to bring everybody together and figure out a solution, period, and how do we make this the best school district in the state of Michigan again.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, my name's Nicole Grove. I'm a parent here in the city. I'm also alumni of John Glenn, 1998. So I've been here a long time. I have two kids in the district, one here at John Glenn, freshman. And I have a new sixth grader at Stevenson. So transition years for both. These children have gone through a tremendous amount of emotional, mental crises in the last few years. And I think you've all kind of forgotten that. Excuse me, as a nurse in the community, I am a home care nurse, the mental, emotional instability that we have experienced because of COVID that everyone seems to have forgotten, that we have all experienced. And you guys want to get rid of social workers? I'm disgusted on every level that you guys would immediately go to social workers and counselors as who you're going to get rid of. We are not immune. We are not immune. Do you want to be in Oxford? Do you? Nobody's brought it up, but I'm thinking about it. We're all thinking about it. I have, both of my children have special needs. My one daughter has an IEP. She has ADHD. She struggles in school. She requires the assistance of a social worker because of her emotional problems with over, you know, COVID. My other daughter has speech impediment that we have worked on. We don't know why she has it. You know, we're not sure. Pretty sure it's medical, but haven't found out. And I'm concerned. Is she going to be able to get her speech? Are you guys going to get rid of that, too? Because we have, over the years, by the way, since she was in preschool, had multiple speech therapists. Many times get moved out and switched. She's had to go to summer school for her speech. And now you guys want to make it worse. And yet I'm hearing you guys talk about your retreats. I don't want to hear about your retreats. Don't go on a retreat. Absolutely not. That's disgusting. These teachers, these counselors, these janitors, they're here for our kids. And you sit in your board office with your helpers, paying them extraordinary amounts of money, and then look at these teachers and these counselors, these janitors, and say, "You take the brunt of our mistake. You take it." That's wrong on every level. And then to come in here and give us no information. Your presentation was garbage. My ADHD ninth grader could have done better. There was no information involved, none. You gave no actual accounting. You gave no actual numbers. If you're going to get rid of so many people, out of how many? Six janitors out of how many?
The lady's time has expired. Thank you.
If you have come in here with actual information, you've had weeks, weeks, months to sit here and come up with a plan, to come up with information for a plan. But you come in here and you treat us like we're a bunch of little kids who don't know what we're talking about, who can't look up information, like we don't know what's going on. We do. We see it. I'm disgusted. And clearly, I was a fan of this district. I grew up here. I graduated here. I have my kids in the district. I wanted to be here. And now I am questioning my logic. I'm just disgusted. I just cannot believe that you guys would sit here and act like we couldn't possibly be given the information because you didn't want to go through a long, boring process of what you did because you did it behind closed doors. That's why we were here. That's why we all came here today. Don't you understand that? We came here looking for information that you kept saying you were going to give us. And yet we got nothing but more runaround, more BS. I'm absolutely disgusted. If I did this in my job, I'd be fired. I'd be absolutely fired. I have to sign off on everybody I see. Every person I go see, every chart I see, I have to sign off. Every single time. And if I did anything that you guys are doing, I'd be fired. Without question. And either you get your acts together or you're going to be fired. As has been said before, we are your bosses. We hire you. So do your job. Do it right or be fired. It's that simple. It's not hard. We expect better. We can do better. We are the 10th-largest city in the state. 10th-largest. Do you guys know that? Do you guys know how many people we serve here?
The lady's time has expired.
I got 28 seconds. I can, again, I can read. Obviously, I'm a nurse. So again, do your job or we will move you out and find someone who can do it better. Thank you.
Item 210.24, Superintendent's Report and Comments. Dr. Dignan.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Just want to start again congratulating Hicks for the wonderful thing that happened last week there with Wild Lake Northern. And to see it in person was incredible. And to see all the kids benefit from it was completely amazing. I want to remind people, too, that we're in concert seasons right now. And hopefully, people will go out and support our schools at the various music concerts that are taking place. I just want to say, despite differing perspectives, our shared goal is all the same, to do what's best for kids. This is not easy at all. Again, some of the decisions that have to be made, the time clock has been kind of turned over. I agree. And we can do better, and we will do better. And part of that doing better is including more people in conversations and making a commitment to that. Because again, anything that happens here impacts our community and impacts everybody that's sitting out there. So again, one of the things that, at the first of the year, is just to work collaboratively to do what's best for Wayne Westland Community Schools. And it's going to take everybody in this room being a part of that. I think through these collaborative efforts and forward-thinking strategies that we can come up with solutions that can kind of meet what has happened, kind of a black swan type of event that has had a major, major impact on our whole school community. So again, I challenge everybody in here. We will be coming on tour. And I wrote down a bunch of notes because I expect as we kind of move forward to take some of the ideas that people lifted this evening. And part of that is knocking on doors and talking to people within our schools because they live, they're the front lines. They have the biggest impact on any of our kids. This is all about our kids. And we're going to do what's best for kids. It's been the mantra. It's what I've lived with in my whole career, is about kids. That's why we're in this profession. So I'm going to end there. But again, I want to thank people coming out this evening and being candid and sharing their opinion on kind of what's going on in the district. And I hope everybody has a wonderful winter break.
Thank you, Dr. Dignan. Before we go to the comments of our Board of Education, I want to just share this very quickly. Hearing the mood of the majority of the Board of Education, all pink-sliped employees should continue to report to work until such time as the administration and the Board of Education of Education consider the entirety of this issue and are able to present a fully thought-out plan to our community. Item 211.24, Review and Recommendations of the Board of Education. Ms. Abney Mitchell.
Yes. Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for coming. Over the last past couple of weeks, I have got so many emails, telephone calls, and text messages, and I just want to say thank you. Even though I was not able to answer them all, I did read them, and with this being my first year on the board, it was a lot of stuff that I learned that I didn't know. So, that was greatly appreciated. Feel free to email me anytime, you know. And the other thing is our kids is the reason why I'm on the board, is to support kids, family, and community. I felt like my community, the city of Inxter, was being left out, and Wayne Westland was being more supported, but I'm here now supporting Wayne Westland, Inxter, Rumbly, Catton, Dearborn Heights, all the communities that we serve, the children, the families, and especially the teachers. But I have a special place in David Hicks. I go up there and I visit. I come up with no appointment, and that's the best thing. I made an appointment with Angela, the assistant principal, and, you know, I was here on the board when she first started, but her job as assistant principal has been eliminated. At this point, from my understanding in the process, we don't have assistant principals at the elementary level. But we only, from my understanding, we have one assistant principal at Wildwood, but we had talked about that, and that's because they have more students. But that position was eliminated, unfortunately. Hopefully, Ms. G would get somebody else. Maybe she'll get two or three more people to fill that one spot, because when I come up to David Hicks, I made an appointment with Ms. G. One time, I made an appointment with Angela one time, and I made an appointment with the social worker one time. So, this is what happened. All of them was late for their appointments, and I'm sitting in a hard way, like, you know, I got an appointment, you know, 15 minutes is my deadline, but it ain't that they forgot about the appointments, they was with students. Angela was sitting in her office, and a student was eating lunch, because he could not eat that day with other students. Ms. G and a social worker came up to office today when I had an appointment with him, and they was dealing with a student. Last week, I made an appointment to go see Ms. G. She was at the front desk being a secretary. So, it is work to be done up there, and I appreciate all of the Hicks family. I see many kids at the supermarket this week with eyeglasses on. I appreciate that. They got the little pink flower. Oh, I say to myself, oh, you got Hicks glasses. Just said it to myself. But I appreciate that, and I appreciate all y'all efforts. And so, but what I want to say tonight is, I'm sorry about Angela, and I don't know, like I said, maybe Ms. G can get two or three more different people in a different role that could help her, and you are appreciated, and all of our students at all of our schools are appreciated, and our teachers, and our community. We are one. We are one, and yes, we do care about the students, that's why we here. And yes, it's going to be some hard cuts. There's going to be some hard cuts, there's going to be some decisions that's going to be made, and we all going to have to learn how to disagree. But the one thing that we all need is to process. We all need to be able to understand it. We all need to make, make this make sense to me, you know? If she got to be laid off, if he got to be laid off, make this make sense to me, you know? Our janitors, you know, make it even, you know? It should be even, and we have to right-size the district. It has to be right-size. It is over too much staff. Thank you. Just support the process.
Mr. Neal.
Okay. Well, hopefully, I can remember everything I want to say, but let me start off again by thanking you all for coming. Those of you who are left, I really appreciate that, so that you can hear what we have to say at the end in more detail. One of the things I wanted to address was the fact that at least one person came up and talked about a segregated board, and quite honestly, I didn't catch the exact wording to get the exact intent. I wasn't sure it was skin color that they were talking about, or whether it was sex. But I'm not ashamed to be an old white man, I can't help it. I will tell you that our care and concern for what happens in the district and all of you is not affected by our sex or by our age. I know everyone but Mr. Gray, and I know them all to be caring, loving people. I've listened to them talk. It has, there's nothing that I can say negative about anybody on this board, and it has nothing to do with skin color. I was on, or sex. I was on the fire department here in Westland for 25 years. When I went on a run, it had nothing, my thought process had nothing to do with who it was, what sex they were, what color their skin was. Everyone gets treated exactly the same. Now, we don't always agree on everything, but we do agree on one thing. We're all trying to do the best job we possibly can and make this work. You've spoken, this huge group has said something that cannot be ignored. You're not going to accept any layoffs. I don't think, I already told you what I think, what the board's going to do. I know they're going to say they're going to study it and so on and so forth. I think it would be impossible to vote for layoffs. We'll see what they come up with. We had a little coup here tonight where we all switched roles. It'd be interesting to see what direction this goes, and in the next meeting, you'll be able to tell, because if we can correctly bring that item back up and put it on the agenda, then there will be discussion on that, and hopefully some more discussion about the ways to solve the problem, or maybe it'll get tabled again. I don't know. I'd just soon vote on it and get it over with, but we'll see what happens. One of the things I can tell you is that social media is powerful. Social media sometimes does us great harm. A lot of what we listen to tonight, because sometimes we know a little more exact information about what was said or what was done, you know, I know, at least, listening, some things are not correct. But I also know that we all have the same sort of thought process that what we hear first tends to stick longer than what we hear afterward. So, a number might not be right, the intent might not be right. I mean, I still hear people talking about transportation going away, and I thought that was taken off the table, and a letter went out to basically say, despite whatever the proposal said, that that's off the table. And then, thinking back to how that got on the table, I think some people interpreted that we want to get rid of transportation. We want instead to look at every single item we can to see where can the savings be had? What, what, you're not going to save it by getting rid of one person or two people, and we can't think like that. We can't think about this one or that one. We have to think about the big picture as well, and maybe we have to study some more. I'll go with that. What I have to tell you is that this is not easy. It's easy to point the finger and blame. I know we can all balance our checkbooks, but quite honestly, I can't balance this checkbook. There's 30,000 lines in this checkbook. There's not many of us that have the capability to look at that and say, ooh, this number's wrong, or why didn't they transfer this 8 million out of this account and put it over here as going out the door? I can't figure that out, and I'm not dumb, but I can't figure that out. And what we end up doing is the same thing all of you actually would do if you're sitting right here. You get a report from somebody who's getting paid good money to figure out whether that, those numbers are correct, and you believe them. And we get a little audit that tells us whether or not we're on the right track or not, but we believe those numbers, and we should believe those numbers. Why should we doubt? We don't have the ability to go back and check it. Our professional that was hired after the person left that had made the mistake took a month and a half, two months, to try and figure this out, whether it's accurate or not. Now, somebody that's in that job, that knows that job, takes that long to figure it out, how long do you think it'd take us to figure it out? We have no idea. So, here we are, we're all faced with the same thing. We've got this big deficit. What do we do? Well, you heard what the initial plans were, that may not go through. We'll find out at the next meeting. But I've heard mentioned pay cuts. Well, who in the heck wants to do pay cuts? I don't mean just for supervision. We suffered that already. The unions have told you, they suffered for years with pay cuts, and this board was thrilled to offer money to get things back in line. And Westland went from one of the lowest paid to one of the better paid under that change. And we, those of you who watched us, you saw us clap with glee, so pleased to give more money. I, for one, and I never heard anybody else ever say this, am not blaming union contracts for this deficit. This deficit's way bigger than that. That money was deserved of the people who work here. That is not the problem. Oh, yeah, you can add that number in as a number that somebody didn't calculate, but by itself, that's not the problem. Everybody knows that. But we do have a problem, and it's not because somebody stole money, it's because somebody didn't move money from one column to the next. And it's a damn shame. I said at the other informational meeting, I personally would like to push for criminal something, but I don't know if that can happen, because look at this turmoil. Look at all of you. Look at all of us. Look at this horrible turmoil caused by one person not moving a number where it belonged. I wouldn't have thought that was even possible. Well, it is possible. You can say no, but you have no idea. And I can tell you that we're trying our best, and when we get done with this meeting, sometime between now and the next meeting, there'll be more discussions about what are our options here, you know? Do we still have to do layoffs or not? I don't think so. But do we have to do that? Or is there some other answer to this problem? I don't know. I know that we're trying our best, and it may not look like it, but we really are, and we do care. As far as those of you who want to get rid of the board, I can promise you, I've told everyone long before any of this ever happened, I'm only here till the end of my term, which is the end of next year. You can recall me out of here if you want, but there's no political aspirations here, there's only care and concern. I want this right. I want it to go back to normal, where the employees feel good, and the parents feel good, and the kids feel good about what's happening. I don't see the answer yet. I'm really hoping, like all of you, that that comes to be. But what I can say here is that we'll all be talking about this sometime between now and the next meeting, and I hope to God that we bring you some new, brand-new solution. And I hope to God that there is some input from others that tell us what to do. You all sat here like I did, and we all know there's someone that wants to save a person in this group and to save a person in that group, and they would be happy if those people were saved. But there's a whole lot of people we're talking about, 20 people, and they all have their own fans, own people that love them and know them and know how much they care about their job and what a great job they do. And yet, at some point, it may still be possible that this board might say, some people have to go, but I'm not saying, I don't think that's going to happen, but it could happen, and each of those people, whoever they are, will still have people saying, well, I don't want to lose them. Well, we don't want to lose them either. We want something better for everybody. And that's the end of my comments.
Thank you. Ms. May.
Thank you. First and foremost, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for coming out this evening. Thank you for sharing your thoughts, your opinions, as well as your ideas. That is so appreciated. The other piece that I'd like to say is just throughout all of this, I've had the opportunity to attend John Glenn's Pancake Breakfast, the band's Pancake Breakfast, first time attending it, very enjoyable event. I will attend next year. Also had the opportunity to attend the Fiesta Fiesta event put on by our CCR department. It was very well-attended and just very, the atmosphere was just very, very welcoming and just a great event. And then, finally, I had the opportunity to attend the Holiday Bazaar, and I was able to make some purchases. I have a new magnet for my dishwasher, much needed. Thank you for my clean and dirty dishes. I also bought a little stress bottle, I probably should have brought it here that I could shake up, just to kind of just, you know, give you something to do. So, I just, I really, in attending those events, what I really had the opportunity to see and appreciate was just the tenacity of the staff, recognizing and understanding that the work must continue, and you're doing so and trying your best to make sure that our students are not impacted, and so thank you for that. The atmosphere, as I said, was just full of joy, and so it's so important for our kids to continue to have joy despite some of the things or decisions or just things that adults do, right? Like, we always talk about the resiliency of kids and understanding that they're impacted by adults, and so I just appreciate you all taking that into consideration. I also want to share that I understand that in this role, I represent the community. So, I've explained this to my fellow board members, as well as Dr. Dignan. When I ask questions, when I push back, I'm pushing back on behalf of the community. When I ask for presentations, I ask for presentations on behalf of the community, because I think it is important for you all to be informed of the work that's being done. I think it is important for us to tell our story and not for social media to tell our story, and I say that to say, because if we don't lead with our story, then whatever story is out there first, that's the story that everyone runs with. And so, we have to be able to stand up, and when we talk about transparency, that's telling our story. The other piece is, just in thinking about us as a board of seven, understanding that there are multiple perspectives at this table, and you all voted each of us in for our varying perspectives, and so we have to take that into consideration. We have to be able to have civil discourse as a board. We also have to be able to have civil discourse with our community. That is very important to me, to be able to hear, just like tonight, there were a couple of resolutions, or I should say, resolutions is not the word I'm looking for, but proposals brought to us in terms of how to generate revenue, and I think that's important, because we can't think of everything, and that's why it's important for us to have these, to have conversations, not necessarily in the auditorium, but being able to have some small focus groups. I like the idea that Mayor Reese brought up in terms of visiting schools and having that opportunity. We just have to do better at making sure we're inviting all voices to the table. And the other piece is, I think what, one of the things that I heard tonight, and I've been saying this just through the emails that we've received, phone calls that I've received, it's not the what as much as it is the how. And so, we understand what the problem is, but now we want to talk about the how. How are we addressing it? How did we get here? How do we move on from here? So, I think that's important. And again, just in saying that, I really, really, really appreciate everyone coming out tonight, and I want to tell you all to have happy holidays, and I say that with many thoughts and even some hesitation, because there's so much going on, but I do understand that this is a much-needed break, and I really want each of you to take the opportunity to really just decompress, not think about this if you can, enjoy your family, enjoy your time off. And again, thank you all for coming out tonight.
Thank you, Ms. May. Mr. Gray.
Yeah, I first wanted to thank everybody that's still here and those of you that had to leave already. I don't have a lot to say, because I think a lot of the people in this room got up here and said a lot of the things a lot better than I could have, and you all know what's going on in your buildings, in your students' buildings, better than we do a lot of times. So, I want to thank you for coming here and talking about the impact that staff members in your buildings are making on your students and on the other staff members. But one thing I did want to talk about- But one thing I did want to talk about is I do think that the board and the administration needs to kind of change how this process is going a little bit. We are now in the middle of December. We are two months into all of this, and here we are. We're having another meeting like this, like we did a month ago, where the room doesn't feel like they know what's going on. The room doesn't feel like they have all of the information. And I want to thank the superintendent for the presentation he gave today. It may have not given everybody all the answers they wanted, but we still have to keep trying to get those answers out there. We need to keep trying for transparency and communication. And to that note, I want to talk about our consent agenda, that according to our board operating procedures, the consent agenda is supposed to be for routine items only. And that is why I asked today for the layoffs to be removed from it. Because I know that maybe historically, this is where we have handled items like that. But I don't want to, and I don't think anybody else in the room here wants to think about the decisions we're making right now as routine. And I want you all to know that we don't think of them as routine. And I would make the recommendation going forward that items of these plans that we partake in, to try to fix this problem, be placed on the regular agenda where they deserve for the debate they deserve.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Ms. Heinz.
Yes. Hello, can you hear me? Yes. So I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. And as the board, we heard you. We understand. You know, we do have empathy. And as I said, we are human. So I try to definitely have that compassion with the holidays coming. And then two, you know, it's difficult losing a job, you know? I was making 72,000 to 365 dollars a week with no health insurance, being a diabetic. So I understand the hardship that can cause the families. You know, you have children, you have high inflation, you might have high rent, and even two, if people have illnesses, like say you have a spouse that might have an illness and they need your medical insurance. I mean, this is life in deficit situation. So I do take these things very seriously. I'm really glad to be with my fellow board members, and I'm glad we were able to just stop for a second and take the time to really look and see what we're doing. Because I just didn't feel comfortable with these decisions with these particular people. Because like the one lady said, you know, we do have to think about the social, emotional learning of our children. They're having a lot of difficulties after COVID. I've experienced it with my son. You know, you want to make sure the kids are safe. We don't want to have another Oxford situation. You know, we want to make sure our teachers feel safe, our students feel safe, and we want to make sure that we're meeting their needs. And then with the Family Resource Center, we do have high poverty in our district. So we want to make sure we do have those resources as well. So again, I'm just really glad that you all came out today. We've had a good time. We was able to go to David Hicks when they had the toys, like the way the kids walked in, like the expressions. All you heard was happiness and laughter through the whole building. That kind of touched my heart because maybe that's the only presence those kids would have got for the holidays, you know? It's really tough. I was a single mom working three jobs, trying to take care of my kid. My husband passed, you know? So it's difficult. So I do understand those concepts. But I'm really hopeful that as a community, we're going to get through this. And this, you know, just like when I got on the board, we had a 4% fund balance way back in 2014. We were able to get through it. We were able to get more money. So we just have to work collaboratively. But I'm really big on transparency because there hasn't really been a lot of transparency. I don't like to see stuff on social media before I find out about it. So that's one thing we have to work harder on. But just working together to figure out solutions. And again, I just want to make sure everybody has a, you know, a happy, safe holiday, and I do appreciate serving you on the board.
Thank you. Mr. Cox.
Thank you, Fred. I'd like, I'd like to say you did a great job of running this meeting having no knowledge that you were going to be doing that. So thank you for that. I want the other members of the Board of Education to know that there are absolutely no hard feelings for their decision to change the chairmanship of this. I am the longest-serving president in the school district's history, and that came because they allowed me to sit in this position. And I knew that when we heard this news, we were going to be going down this road. And it's my hope that we can do exactly what's been talked about tonight, work together. Because there's a lot of people in this room and in this school district who weren't talked about tonight, and we love them too. And they're important to our school district. It's very difficult for me to understand a path forward when 91% of our general fund goes to employee salaries and the other 10% goes to transportation. So the question is, where is it going to come from? I know that ultimately, it is going to come. Because if the Board of Education doesn't make the decisions, and it won't be the Michigan Department of Education that comes down, it'll be the Michigan Department of Treasury that comes down. And we will not be in deficit. It just simply isn't allowed. I hope that we can work together, and maybe there are more ways that we can affect this budget. By the way, we're not in deficit. All of this is about the future spending plan. We're not in deficit. And frankly, the state won't allow us to be. So I want you to know, no hard feelings. As long, the board has always spoken with one voice, no matter how individual members might vote on something, when the majority makes a decision, everybody's arm-in-arm and walks in the same direction. And I pledge, that's exactly what I will do. So thank you. Thank you, Fred.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. I want the public to know and to understand that we are going to continue meeting after Christmas. I would like to call the individual board members together to get your input and your thoughts concerning these issues. I'll be meeting with Dr. Dignan in the morning to discuss these issues and discuss how that we're going to move forward in our district. There is coming a time, because of our current situation, that we are going to come to a time when we get very close to or are under the 5% that the state requires. And we cannot, as a board, allow that to happen. So I want you to understand that why we have rescinded the pink slips, that we're going to continue to move forward in an effort with our community, with the board, to come to, and with the union as well, to come up with equitable solution. I've always been told that the best deal ever made was when both sides decided that they cheated one another, that they got something that they didn't expect. We're, we're here to listen to the community, to move with our community. But again, there is coming a time when this district will have to be right-sized. And so I want to leave you with that tonight. Thank you for coming. Thank you for being a part of this. Your comments were appreciated. With that, do we have a motion? Move adjournment, second? All in favor, will you say aye? We are dismissed.